Flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Canty, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This meeting of the Plymouth Select Board is taking place in a hybrid format. Members of the board are joining us here in person at the Great Hall. Members of the public are joining us here in person at the Great Hall as well as over the Zoom webinar platform. Any member of the public may join us here in public at the Great Hall or over the Zoom webinar platform. The login information for the Zoom webinar platform is included on the agenda that is posted on the town website. Members of the public may also view this meeting by watching Comcast Channel 9 or Verizon Channel 47. And also, members of the public are reminded pursuant to Massachusetts General Law that any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of the Select Board after notifying the Chair, subject to a reasonable requirements of the Chair so as to not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of any recordings that they are aware of. We are aware of a recording being made by the local scene. We are not aware of any other recordings at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Canty. The first thought of our business is a public hearing, a violation of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 12. New World Tavern, Carl Heine, owner, and... Lisa, this one's just a little different. Do I need to read this into the record? No, this was hand-delivered. Or Kate? We'll just read it in the record. Mr. Canty.
Pursuant to the notification delivered to Mr. Heine, you are hereby notified that a hearing will be held at the Plymouth Select Board on December 10, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. The hearing will be held in the Great Hall on the second floor of Town Hall at 26 Court Street, Plymouth, Mass., regarding a violation of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 12, which requires proof of a liquor legal liability insurance policy. This issue requires proof of the insurance coverage to be made by filing a certificate of insurance with the local licensing authority. New World Tavern is facing an immediate and indefinite suspension of their liquor license for failure to have this liquor legal liability insurance policy. If a valid liquor legal liability insurance policy exists, please forward that information immediately. That was sent out on December 5.
Thank you. Hand-delivered, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Kate, did you just want to give us a couple options here? We know why we're here. And is the Carl Heine also here? You're here also? Okay.
Hi, excuse me. Thank you.
Kate, just explain just briefly what were the processes here tonight for people that are watching. I mean, I think we all...
Certainly. So, the town received notification that New World Tavern did not have liquor liability insurance. That notification was sent to Lisa Johnson. MGL Chapter 138, Section 12, requires common victualers to have liquor liability insurance. In the absence of that policy, that is a violation of Section 12. A hearing notice was prepared and hand-delivered. And I know Mr. Heine had reached out, I think, to several people today. I think at this point, the Select Board, as the local licensing authority, can have a hearing and hear from Mr. Heine if he so desires the options at the end. I suppose the Board could choose to take no action. They could revoke the liquor license that New World Tavern possesses or issue a suspension of that license, either definite or indefinite. And as far as the suspension goes, the ability to condition that on good, for good cause, to lift that suspension exists, depending on what the Board chooses.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Kate at this time, or you want to wait and see if Mr. Heine wants to say something? Did you want to comment, sir?
Sure. Is this...
If the green light's on, it's on.
Green light's on.
Just identify yourself for the...
Yeah, so I guess I'm up here to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Just identify yourself for the record.
Sure. Carl Heine from the New World Tavern.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Heine?
I have a question.
Mr. Blitzer.
Do you have liability insurance?
As of right now, no.
Do you foresee getting it?
Yes, I actually foresee myself getting it about three weeks ago. But between myself, the insurance carrier, Nolan right down the street on Somerset, and the carrier itself has not been able to communicate well together. So there were some things that we were supposed to do for safety, I don't want to say violation, but they wanted us to make some safety measures. It took me a while to get that done for them. By the time I sent it back to them, they said they would not reinstate. Then I called the insurance carrier. He said that they did. All I had to do was sign something that said we had a no... What is that called? Help me out, Lisa. No event clause, saying nothing happened. There was no liabilities. So then they reinstated. And then they unreinstated the next day, saying they needed one more thing from the state that I have been trying to get since Thursday when I got the handheld letter delivered. So as of right now, I don't. I'm hoping by the end of tomorrow, but I would say one more day further than that.
So, Carl, I don't mean to put you on the spot. This is not comfortable for any of us. But you were here before...
I was.
And you didn't have it?
I did have it.
No, you were here before. You called before us because you did not have liability insurance.
Correct. By the time the meeting started, I did have it.
I know, but you didn't have it for a period.
That's correct.
Was that the same reason, or was it different?
No. No, no. That was two different carriers. The first reason that I think, if it recalls it, was just payments.
So, you realize that you were in a predicament, you were in a bad spot here. This is coming from the ABC. If something happens in your establishment and the fact that we know you don't have liability insurance and we let you operate, the town of Plymouth is liable for anything that happens in your establishment. And that's coming right from the ABC. So, we're in a real predicament. We hate to see this, especially this time of year. I hate to see any, any business not being able to operate. So, but we're, our hands are kind of tied, you know, with what we have to do. So, anyway. Okay, that's all. Thanks, Carl.
Mr. Canty.
And then Mr. Golden.
So, you, what is your predicted timeframe again for...
Well, again, my predicted timeframe was late last week. But in talking to with the carrier, and again, they needed one more piece of information for me that they should have by tomorrow. He says they can turn it around that quick, but I usually give it another day after that because usually they can't turn it around that quick.
Okay.
So I'm thinking that I could probably have the insurance tomorrow, but I don't want to say definite because it's not in my control what timeframe they can handle.
Okay.
They're telling me tomorrow, but I don't want to tell you tomorrow.
All right. And you're anticipating that once you have it this time, you'll be able to retain it?
Yeah, as long as they agree that all the safety issues that have been done have been completed, which they are.
Okay. You, I presume you understand that we can't really allow you to operate with a liquor license without the liability insurance in the meantime, though?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Heine, have you suspended the sale of alcohol at your establishment since the deliverance of this...
No, I have not.
What were the safety measures that were cited by your carrier?
There was a couple of minor ones, which were just to highlight where some steps were with tape, you know, so that people can see the actual step coming up. Again, we've been there 15 years and nobody's ever asked me to do these things before, but easily done. The two hard things that were done was they wanted the hood inspected, not inspect, excuse me, inspected to make sure that it was, you know, of a legal situation, not cleaned or anything, but just inspected to make sure that there wasn't going to be a fire. The other big one thing was the ancil system, was to have someone come in there and do an inspection on the ancil system, which we do every year anyway, or every six months, but it was up towards the end of the month and they wanted that covered before they would sign on. So by the time I got in there, it was maybe a week later, two weeks later. But all been completed now.
Thank you.
John, you said no, right?
And again, all these have been completed and were sent to the insurance on, I believe it was November 4, within a day of that. And up until December 2, we were all set and ready to go until I called my insurance company and said, what's going on? They said, well, you still owe them. Now they're asking. They didn't ask for it before, one more piece of information, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Questions?
No, I'm also, I just, I'm just going to say that I can't support any establishment in the town and after without the proper liability insurance for the liquor liability. Myself, I mean, everybody has to play by the same rules. I'm sorry that, you know, this has happened and, you know, I, I hope if anything, because it's not the first time. We went through this in December. I think it was December. August, August. And we were very lenient about, you know, there's no way I knew that you didn't have liquor liability. I mean, because I would have requested that you come right back only because I'm not going to put the town at liability and just, you know, make it liable, so. And the other things with your hood, I understand that. I have that kind of business and I know that, you know, we have companies come in and maintain and do all that, so even the grease traps, it's all recorded now. It's a different era. So, my advice to you on that is to get up to speed for your own benefit and your own liability benefit. Which brings me to the next thing. In order for your, your new liquor license, starting in January 1, you'd have to have all these things done before the office can send you a new liquor license, even if this one is all taken care of to the end of the month. So I'm just wanting to bring it out that all that needs to be done in ample time. Don't wait till the 30th of December and, you know, expect the inspectors or whoever to run down there and do it because there's not going to be enough time, let alone Lisa. I don't know the letters of the law. Should say Ms. Johnson, excuse me. And, you know, so I'm not going to go on about it, but it's the wish of the Board, but I will not support a liquor license for any establishment that doesn't have the, the right liquor liability in place. I just can't do it, so. Wish of the Board, Mr. Canty?
So I have a proposed motion to make that would suspend the license forthwith, meaning immediately, but it would be pending submission of an approval, submission and approval of a valid liquor liability insurance policy so that if it is secured in the next 48 hours or whatever period of time, it wouldn't require a subsequent meeting because obviously we only have, as of right now, one scheduled additional meeting this year because of where the holidays fall and all that. It would require that the, the liquor on the premises be covered or removed and it would also require the surrendering of the license for the time being, potentially. It would be indefinite, but if it, if the liquor liability insurance is secured, then it could be restored. But unless my colleagues have other comments, I would be prepared to make a motion to that effect.
Anybody else have a comment?
You can second it?
No, what I'm going to do is, I want to add to that. And if he does secure liquor liability, which I hope he does, I'd like to have monthly, I'd like to have something from the insurance company sent to Lisa saying that the insurance is, is, is good. It's at least for the next year, so we don't go through this again because this is the second time in a year. And, you know, something could have happened. We, we, knock on wood, we'd have been lucky. So, I would like to have that as part of, as part of his requirement. So, just something every month saying that the insurance is valid. And as part of your motion, Mr. Canty, who's going to determine whether he can reopen in Arbery if we don't meet?
So it would, it would go through the normal process. It would be sent to the licensing agent and then I believe the, that some paperwork needs to be sent to ABCC for approval. So once all that is done, then they could re... Well, they can continue to operate without a liquor license. They just can't sell liquor. So they can still sell food. They can still have, they can still sell soda and other soft drinks. They just can't sell alcohol. But it would, once the paperwork is sent to the licensing agent and then approved by ABCC, then they could operate again with the liquor license.
Mr. Golden? No? All right, so is that a motion, Mr. Canty?
I would make...
Why don't you try it again? I mean, so we understand that?
Yes, yes.
Because it's amended.
I would make a motion that we indefinitely suspend the liquor license of the New World Tavern located at 56 Main Street, effective forthwith, pending submission and approval of a valid liquor liability insurance policy to the town pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 12. I would also require monthly confirmation of liquor liability insurance for the next, through the end of 2025. And the pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, the liquor on premises needs to either be covered or removed while the license is suspended and the license need to be, needs to be surrendered forthwith.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Golden, discussion. Seeing none, Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It's unanimous and...
Right. Mr. Chairman, could I ask one question of Mr. Heine? Is that other line?
Well, you could. I just wanted to see if Kate wanted to just walk us through what the next, how this works.
I just wanted to ask. I can certainly write that up with correspondence from the town. I just wanted to ask Mr. Heine if he would wait to get hand delivery of that letter or if, if he can't wait, we would use the police department to deliver it. So, if he could hang out, that would be helpful for maybe 20 minutes. Okay.
Can we ask him?
Sure.
Kate, so they would need to stop selling liquor immediately, though, correct?
Yes, forthwith.
So, as of, we just took the vote at 5:19, so it's...
It should stop right now and then the delivery of the letter to Mr. Heine in about 10 minutes is going to tie that loose end up. But yes, forthwith, it should be stopped.
Thank you.
Mr. Blitzer?
Carl, could I ask you one question, Mr. Heine? Want to come up? Yeah. So my question, are you, what's your plan, at least for tomorrow and the rest of the night, where you can't sell alcohol? Are you going to be, is it worth it to be open or...
No, I'll have to close.
Yeah, that's what I figured, so, yeah.
So as soon as I get the... So as soon as I get the letter and work out-
Yeah, so the liquor, so, but you do have to cover the liquor, but that's not going to be an issue.
But, right, because it'll be closed.
No, so hopefully you quickly get this done and you get back open. I know this is the Christmas season, so, and I know you've got parties, so.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the licenses and change of manager. And his three administrative notes, we can take them all together or what's the wish of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm fine with the licenses being approved as a group, but if we could on administrative note two, could we pull that out?
Sure can.
Thank you.
If my colleagues don't have any other questions or would like to remove any from a group, I would make a motion to approve all of the listed licenses, including the change of manager, as well as administrative notes one and three as a group.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Golden, discussion? Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Now over to administrative note number two, Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Administrative note number two is for the transfer of, the conveyance of real property located at 31 Strand Avenue from the Town of Plymouth to the Plymouth Redevelopment Authority. I, I'd like to have the Plymouth Redevelopment Authority come in and talk to us a little bit about this. For context, the, the PRA has asked for a budget increase for fiscal year '26 of 248.98% more than we have funded them in the past. I spoke with Lynn Barrett, our finance director. In years, in fiscal years '23, '24, and '25, they received between 2% to 3% increases in each of those years. I'm concerned about their fiscal solvency at this point, so I'd, I'd like for them to come in and talk to us a little bit about why they're asking for such a large increase before we transfer this parcel to them, which may have some value to the town should anything happen to that organization. As part of their, as part of their increase, they provided some data to the, the town manager and the finance department about the work that they do. And there's some admirable work that's done by the Plymouth Redevelopment Authority. In fact, this, this transfer of land at 31 Strand Ave was commenced by me when I was the Plymouth Redevelopment Authority's program director. But to look at their establishing charter and the work that they actually do now, they're completely inconsistent with what they were set up to do, there's no real redevelopment at work. It's more in the realm of community development. So I'd like to talk to them a little bit before we give them any land, if that's all right with my colleagues, so.
No problem from the board, put them on a future agenda?
Would I motion to table this?
Second? Well, you could motion to table, you'd need a date certain, so we could just take no action and then just bring it up later.
No action's fine with me.
No action?
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to, on the agenda items, we're going to take the tax classification here in first. So Ms. Dunn, welcome.
Thank you very much, Ann Dunn, Director of Assessing. So before I begin, I'd just like to say thank you to the Board of Assessors that have helped me through the year. And three of the members are present today, that's Mike Horahan, the Chair, Jim Sullivan, Vice Chair, Donna Randalls, and there's two members that couldn't make it, Dick Finnegan and Rick Nolan. I'd also like to thank the assessing staff because we wouldn't have gotten everything done timely. So tonight's the tax classification and we're here to review changes in valuation, shifts, differences in average tax bill for both single family and commercial, considerations and recommendations from the finance department. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to adopt a town's tax policy by allocating or classifying the tax levy among the property types, which is residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. The Select Board must vote on how to adopt this policy. They will either vote a single or unified rate, which means all classes, residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property have the same rate, or a multiple or split rate in which you move away from the residential towards the commercial, industrial, and personal property. Additionally, at tonight's meeting, you could adopt certain exemptions and discounts. One is an open space discount, which is up to 25% of the residential factor and currently we have no land classified, so we are not recommending this. The residential exemption, which is up to 20% of the average of all residential value. The eligibility, you must be, the domicile must reside in the property and we are not recommending that. It's usually for high summer communities or very high rentals and right now we don't feel that's reasonable. And the small commercial exemption, it's up to 10% of the assessed value of eligible properties. It has to be occupied by the business, value of less than $1 million and no more than 10 employees. And again, we're not recommending this, we have many small businesses and it's a shift within the commercial class itself. So some of the key changes from fiscal '24 to '25. Currently, if all stays the same at a unified tax rate, the tax rate would be 1269 and that's an 18%, 18%, 18 cent decrease over fiscal '24. The average single family for fiscal '25 has risen to $586,103. This is an increase of $37,629. Based on a unified tax estimated at 1269, the average single family would pay $7,437.65. This is an increase of $378.79 over fiscal '24. The median single family value for FY '25 is $531,400. This is an increase of $33,100. The tax at an estimated unified rate would be $6,743.47. But we see this is an increase of $330.35 from fiscal '24. The average commercial value for fiscal '25 is $1,754,528. This has increased $226,559 from fiscal '24. That average commercial tax would be $22,264.96 at a unified rate of 1269. This is an increase of $2,600 over fiscal '24. The median commercial value is currently at $623,500. The tax would be $7,912.22. This would increase $774.52 over fiscal '24. So what has occurred with the property values? I know this is hard to read, there is a presentation also online that you could go back through if you can't see this. Currently, the residential value is over $15 billion. It's increased 8.23% from fiscal '24. The commercial has increased to $1.4 billion and that's a 12.16% increase. The industrial is at $480,347.74, it's just about a 1% increase. The overall commercial industrial is at $1.9 billion and that's a nine, overall 9% increase. The personal property has increased 10.78%, it's currently at $632 million. The overall commercial, industrial, and personal property is at $2.5 billion with an overall 9.55% increase. The total taxable value for the Town of Plymouth for FY '25 is at $18,182,342,453. It is an 8.4% overall increase with taxable value for FY '25. So what makes up the percentages of these values? Currently, 86% is residential at the $15 billion. Commercial is at the $1.4 billion at 8%. Industrial is at $310 million, 2%. The power plant is at $169 million with a 1%. And personal property is $632 million, which makes up 3% of the tax base. As we had already previously stated, this is the last five years and it shows the change of the average single family and the average commercial. As we had stated, for FY '25, the average single family at a unified rate would pay $7,437.65, which was the $378.79 increase. The valuation's at the 586,103. And for fiscal '25, we added 153 new single family homes to the tax base. For the average commercial, as we had stated, it's, the tax bill is at $22,265.65 and the valuation is at $1.7 million, which was a $22,000 increase. And you can see that the number of commercial properties has dropped by 19 this year. We had a commercial condo rescinded, that was 15 parcels. We had some go to mixed use and the plan has been done to consolidate lots. This graph right here just shows the average tax bills over the last five years and as we had previously stated, the commercial is going up approximately $2,600 and you can see that on this graph, and the residential, $378.79. I'm going to have to apologize, the presentation that the Select Board had, the percentages were wrong on your graph. Jade does have a corrected version. So currently, for fiscal '25, the makeup of the single family, 0.6% is less than $200,000. 1.4% fall between $200 and $299,000. 11% is between $300 and $399,000. 28% is between $400 and $499,000. 43% is between $500 and $749,000 and this is where you find our median value of the 531,300 and the average assessed value of 586,103. 11% fall between $750,000 and $999,000 and 5% are $1 million or greater. This is the same similar chart for the commercial. Currently, we have 28% is less than $299,000. 15% fall between $300 and $499,000. 21% fall between $500 and $999,000. 28% are between $1 million to $4.9 million and 8% are $5 million or greater. So as we talk about the shift, what would be the impact? As I had stated, the average single family tax bill for fiscal '25 is $7,437.65. A 1% shift, the residential would save $11.72. The average commercial would increase $228.09. A 3% shift, the residential would save $35.17 and the average commercial would increase $666.72. I'm not going to read them all, they're there just as a reference. The 31% is what would be needed in order to keep the average single family tax bill similar to fiscal '24, which is approximately $7,059. So this would be a savings to the taxpayer, residential, of $380.97 and the commercial would increase $6,965.48. So as we think about the considerations for splitting a tax rate, the diversity of the tax base, as I had stated, residential is at 86%, the commercial is at 8%, industrial is at 3%, and personal property is 3%. This is very similar to last year's percentages, there wasn't much change. And as I just stated, a 31% shift would be needed in order to keep the average single family tax bill similar to fiscal '24. So as I just stated about the diversity of the tax base, 86% is residential, 8% is commercial, 3% is industrial, and 3% is personal property. What you must consider is does, does the commercial, industrial, and personal property have the ability to absorb the shift if you want to split? And what are your goals for your economic growth? And what would a shift do to that? Those are things you need to contemplate as you decide. So currently, based on this information, the finance department is recommending a unified rate for fiscal '25. Thank you.
Mr. Golden and Mr. Canty, then Mr. Mahoney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for being here tonight, Ann. I thought the presentation was thorough. On the, one of the first slides, you folks recommended that, that there were not, that we should not pursue a small commercial exemption. Could you talk a little bit more in depth about that, why you made that recommendation, what the concerns would be?
Yep. You have to see where all your values fall. So majority of your values are under the $1 million.
64% about, yeah.
And so when you're shifting, you're shifting from that small group to the larger group. It's a, just a shift within commercial.
Right.
I just, I don't know whether it would be a savings to everyone?
Sure. I think it's something that I'd, I'd like for us to explore in future iterations. I don't necessarily think we need to go back to the drawing board here tonight, but I think, you know, the majority of our commercial properties are these smaller mom and pop, less than a million dollar type properties. As you can see, the next group is a million dollars to almost $5 million, so that's going to be much larger parcels. I think that if we were, if we wanted to help out some of our, you know, mom and pop operations here in town, this could be a way to do it without splitting the tax rate and putting additional burden on the whole, the whole tax class. So it's something that I think we should explore.
Mr. Canty?
Ann, you mentioned the, the reasoning for the loss of those 19 commercial parcels? You said there was a condo that was rescinded?
139 Sandford Street, the old medical building, they rescinded that condominium, there were 15 units in there.
Okay. Rescinded it into what?
Just office building.
And that's not a commercial?
It is, but the number of parcels changed. You had 15 individual units going down.
Okay, okay, okay. And then was, you also mentioned consolidation of lots, was it that lot or were there others?
No, there was like another one that consolidated the lot and then we had several go to like a mixed use, so you're not seeing that in the, just the commercial.
Okay. So in terms of the loss, the parcels went down, but the properties themselves are still being taxed as commercial?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, that's, that's comforting at least. We're not really losing, we're just consolidating for one reason or another, okay. I have no other questions, I will have comments later, but.
Mr. Mahoney?
Ann, good evening.
Good evening, John.
I heard a rumor about you, I was wondering if you can confirm it. Is this going to be your last tax classification presentation?
I know you're sad about that, yes.
Are, are you getting emotional?
No.
Okay. And how many, do you know how many you've done?
22.
Oh, who's counting?
Right.
Okay, fantastic.
Could say this is my first one. Could say it was one.
All right, I'm going to get out my calculator and I was just wondering if we can do a little math. So the proposed FY '25 tax rate is going to be 18 cents lower, which is what?
1269.
1269? And... I'm sorry, can you go to, I, I need you to go to one of the pies that breaks down the, the one with the plant and the one with the, that's the one. So pulling out my calculator and if we look at industrial, the 2%, correct?
Yes.
Does that include the North Plymouth Industrial Park?
It includes all industrial except for the power plant.
Correct, which includes the North Plymouth Industrial Park and Camelot, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So for those individuals watching at home who aren't attuned to how this works, the proposed tax rate for FY '25 will be 1269. proposed tax rate for FY '25 will be 12.69 per thousand, correct?
Yes.
Which means that if you divide 100 million by 1,000, you take that enter and multiply it times 12.69, and you come out with the tax revenue. Which means that for every 100 million dollars, we're generating a value of, whether it's residential, commercial, or industrial, we're generating 1.269 million dollars. So for every 100 million, somebody is valued at, right? Okay. So I'm gonna take 1.269 million, and I'm just gonna multiply it times 3. So I see it's 310 million. It's gonna keep it simple and multiply it times 3. So you've got two industrial parks, one of which I believe the groundbreaking was back in 1962, encompasses almost 500 acres. And the last number I was given, employees, over 5,000 people. And then you have this Camelot down off of Long Pond Road, which is probably just a smaller version of the North Plymouth Industrial Park. And those, all of those businesses and all of those industrial parks give you less than $4 million a year in property tax revenue. Am I wrong?
Well, I don't have a calculator, you do. So I'm gonna go with you.
Okay, thank you. So my, my point being is that there hasn't been a scenario in the last several decades, there is not a scenario tonight, and there will be, never be a scenario in the next 10 decades or ever where this community should consider a split tax rate. It's at 86. The residential's tax rate's stayed at 86. I believe it was 86 last year. That is a statistical anomaly. We are gonna add another 3 to 6 billion in residential development over the next 15 to 25 years eventually. And Ann won't be here to make the presentation, probably in the year 2040, give or take. You're gonna be pushing 95 to 99% residential. And Ann, I just, I, I, listen, I wish you all the best, obviously heading into the holiday season, but congratulations on your time.
Thank you.
And it was a pleasure working with you over the years.
Thank you very much. There is one more comment I'd like to make. For the excess levy capacity for fiscal '25, based on the unified rate, it will be $3,152,091.28.
The total?
The total excess levy capacity is $3,152,091.28.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if my colleagues have no further questions, I'll make a motion to adopt a unified tax rate for fiscal year '25.
Okay, but before we do discussion and go further, I just want, is there anyone online that would, would like to comment on this? I don't see any hands, but I usually don't, you know what I mean? No? Is there anyone in the audience? Okay. Come on up, please. You gotta, you gotta do it over here. Identify yourself for the record, please, and make sure the green light's on. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lana Matthews. And my question is, do we have any idea what percentage of the residential stock is owner-occupied? And what percentage is, you know, like second-family homes or that kind of situation?
Currently, I'm gonna say no. It's something we ask owners to supply us each and every year. It's a really hard thing to obtain from the homeowners. We have over, with condominiums, 24,000 buildings that we try very hard. We have approximately 3,000 personal property accounts. Half of those are the second homes. So I don't know the answer to do it. We send out questionnaires. We send out letters asking, is this a primary domicile? Is this a second home? And oftentimes, we get no response.
Thank you. Any other questions from anyone in the audience? Seeing none, I have a motion by Mr. Golden for unified tax rate, second by Mr. Canty. Discussion. Mr. Canty.
I'm happy to support a motion for a unified tax rate. I know we received a public comment a few weeks ago about a split tax rate. We've received some, some comments about that in the past. We've also received comments in the past saying that a unified tax rate was in the best interest. From my perspective, we have a limited commercial tax base, much more limited than we would like. Expanding that commercial tax base to reduce the burden on residential taxpayers is a significant objective of mine, and I know several of my colleagues as well. But by, if you had a split tax rate and you taxed existing commercial properties at a higher rate, you'd only be disincentivizing additional commercial taxpayers from coming online, making it harder for them to open a business, employ people. You'd also be likely pushing out some other existing commercials. So you, instead of keeping, this isn't a Quincy or a Boston or a Cambridge where you could tax them at a higher rate, but there's enough customer base there that they're gonna endure it for the most part. This is a place where it's, it's, can be tougher to open a business down here, and it's more volatile. And I think you'd, if you had a split tax rate and you put more of the burden on commercial taxpayers, you'd be pushing them to either not open here in the first place or to move their location somewhere else on the South Shore or, or somewhere else entirely. So it's not in our interest to have a split tax rate. In the short term, would it reduce the burden on residential taxpayers in the short term? Maybe. But in the long term, you'd just be, you'd be putting more burden on fewer commercial taxpayers over time. And eventually, residential taxpayers are gonna get hit with that anyways. So our priority to reduce the burden on residential taxpayers, in my opinion, should be expanding the existing commercial tax base at its current tax rate rather than by taxing the existing commercial tax base at a higher rate. I don't think that, I think that's penny-wise but pound-foolish in the long term. So I also, I have, I'm, I'd be curious to see it played out in, in more depth, what Mr. Golden brought up about the small commercial exemption. But I would point out that while I am in favor of a unified tax rate, that that type of an exemption, one of the requirements is they have no more than 10 employees in the aggregate, which could disincentivize the expansion of mom-and-pops as they grow, make it harder for them to adjust. Whereas if it's a unified, they're paying the same valuation regardless of the value of their parcel, regardless of the number of employees, that they can grow that business as it operates in the normal course without having to worry about, oh, am I at the, am I at the threshold of going over and paying substantially more taxes than I was otherwise? Can I afford to hire this additional employee in that way? I think that can complicate the calculus of a growing business. I would be interested in seeing that data before I made a statement, but that's my preliminary thoughts on that. But I definitely wanna stress the importance of a unified tax rate for easing the burden on residential taxpayers. Even though it doesn't seem like it, in the long term, it definitely is the way to go, in my opinion. So thank you for that.
Any other comments for the board? Mr. Golden.
I would agree with what, most of what Mr. Canty said. I, I think that we absolutely need to continue to encourage commercial growth in the town of Plymouth, and implementing a split tax rate will disincentivize those folks from coming in. I do this, this type of work for a municipal contractor that operates in over 35 communities across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Most people that we, most clients that we work with either don't have a split tax rate because their, their commercial base is similar to ours, or if they do have a split tax rate, they're exploring moving back towards a unified rate over time. So Plymouth absolutely needs to see some, some economic development, and as, as long as I sit here, I will support a unified tax rate.
Mr. Blitzer.
I agree on the unified tax rate. We, we need to, to ease the burden of the residential taxes, so we need to increase more commercial tax revenue. And the way we can do it, well, one of the tools we can use is a single, single tax and make it another incentive to, to come and do business in our town. There's a lot of towns that have the challenges we have. So to be competitive, we have to, I think this is one tool we can use to entice businesses. There are other, other things we can do. Increase in heights is a thing I wanna talk about at some point, is another tool to try and entice businesses to, to come to our town to ease that burden. So I'm definitely voting to keep the single tax rate to, to at least keep trying to, to increase, we keep, we've talked about it, increasing the commercial tax revenue to try and, we're not gonna lower it, but stabilize the residential taxes. So I'm voting yes to do that. Thank you.
Before I do the roll call, I'm gonna say, you know, sat here quite a while. And the scenario, as sad as it is, is 86% as we saw residential. And that's really the issue, in, in a small sentence. There isn't enough commercial tax base in the community to offset. The swing is, is way, way, as you saw, way off. And, you know, people in the community gotta realize, in order to have commercial development, every time somebody proposes something, everybody comes out in arms. It has to stop, or you're gonna be paying the taxes that you're paying now. It's really, you know, don't shoot the messenger, but I'm gonna tell you like it is, like I always do. A good example of that is down in Cedarville. Now you've got the mall poking at the foundation, which I sit on by the way it's set up. Mr. Hartman in the audience does also, and there's others. They've worked a long, hard time to get some property and get some commercial stuff going there. And then we see ridiculous signs, or I, let me say it this way, I see ridiculous signs about sand mining. That's a new term. It's probably the only term in Plymouth right now. And it's sad. It's called sand removal. And it has to be done in some locations, and it's gonna be done. And as far as I know, there's two actual operations in this community that actually have sand removal, and I believe one of them is shutting down very soon. So there's a lot of misinformation out there, and I know it just doesn't pertain to this, but in a, in a way, it really does. When you sit here as long as I have, and everybody at every corner's arguing about not in my backyard, it has to stop. As a community, we have to focus with the planning board. You talk about master plans and everything else. Well, you know what? We need a plan where we can have another industrial park. I mean, we can talk all night long. Either that or just keep paying the taxes as they go up. I mean, there's no, there's no magic to this. We have departments that are understaffed, our police department, our fire department, this entire building pretty much is understaffed. Our DPW is understaffed, and I can go on and on. And the town keeps growing, but the staff keeps shrinking. It's not gonna keep going this way. You gotta start changing the way we do business in this town. And I'm sorry, I don't wanna sound like I'm preaching, but it's that important to me that somebody has to put the message out there. And I think we do, and I think we all support development. But you know what? We oughta work together and do it equally across the town. There's no one part of town that's any better than the other. Everybody needs to share this burden. So that being said, Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, unanimous. Next up, and thank you, Ms. Dunn, and happy retirement. Town Brook. Mr. Gould, I believe. Jenny Pond, Morton Park.
Let me get that presentation up. Good evening. For the record, Dave Gould, Director of Energy and Environment. With the recent start of the Jenny Pond dredging project, I wanted to provide the board with an update on two other Town Brook projects that are of significant size and scale, and both of which will also be capital requests for this upcoming fiscal year. I'm going to start with the dam repairs at Jenny Pond and what's referred to as a nature-like fishway. I might often use the term bypass, which is essentially one and the same, so please don't get confused by that. So the, the impetus for this project is to bring the condition of Jenny Pond Dam into compliance with Mass Office of Dam Safety standards. There hasn't been much, if any, work done in quite some time on the dam structure. And so we've had reports done every five years per regulations to inspect that dam, and there's some significant amount of work that needs to be done there. Some of the challenges, as you all know, there's limited physical space. One of the main challenges is the spillway, where the water goes from Jenny Pond through the dam structure and downstream, is very small and currently cannot pass large storm events. And as you all know, we are getting more and more precipitation events that are of significant rainfall. So one of the issues we've been looking at is trying to increase fish passage on the herring run through this dam structure. We, we upgraded the existing fish ladder in 2007 from what was called the pool and weir to an Alaskan sea pass. It passes significantly more fish, but we still can get tens of thousands of fish backed up below the dam. So one of the things we've talked about in trying to increase fish passage is this nature-like fishway. One of the benefits of that is it also serves another purpose, which allows us to move water around the dam, which allows us to achieve a passage of a 100-year storm event. So that also helps us achieve some, some requirements for dam safety. So this is an example of a storm that occurred in July of 2019. This is a surface water elevation of Jenny. That's about 18 inches from cresting over Spring Lane, which is the roadway into the park. This is what it looked like going through the fish ladder and downstream of the mill, completely overtopping the downstream weir and the fish ladder. That was a seven-inch rainfall event in July, which is pretty rare and pretty unique. That storm was so significant, we could not pull a weir board out of the dam structure because we have to physically pick them with a, with, with long handles by hand. And there was so much pressure behind those, we had to ask the contractor that was working on the Holmes Dam project to come down to Spring Lane with the backhoe and break one of the boards and snap it in half to allow water to go through. So one of the major improvements we'll be seeing to this dam structure is an easier way for one individual to move boards in and out of this antiquated structure to allow storm events to pass safely. So again, a couple of these major dam repairs on the downstream side near the existing path, there's quite a bit of work that needs to be done for the seepage going underneath the dam structure. The stormwater actually goes from the pond side to the downstream side and conveys water, what we refer to as a preferential pathway, which you don't wanna see in the dam. We'll be fixing that. There's a soldier pile wall that's on the downstream side of Spring Lane that has failed, and that's what supports the actual roadway. There are two large trees in the dam that are allowed to grow to quite significant amount of size. One was taken down recently. The other is still there. The issue with that is they've grown into all the stone masonry, and they need to be removed as well as the stumps. And when we do that, we are gonna pull apart a lot of masonry work that we're gonna then have to put back together. There's significant repairs to the spillway that I mentioned, as well as the weir boards and some operational improvements to make it safer for pulling boards in and out of that structure. There's also, once we do all of that work, we've significantly disturbed the roadway, the upstream side, the downstream side of the dam, and all the utilities in between, we all then have to put it back together. So there's significant costs associated with all of that work. Some of the benefits that you'll receive from this project is we'll be putting in a new water main into Spring Lane, a new sewer line that goes underneath Jenny Pond, down through the walkway and over to Market Street. That's rated as an F for condition. We'll be replacing that. You'll also see new sidewalks, stormwater improvements. All the electrical, gas utilities will be upgraded. We'll also upgrade the electric utilities to allow for EV charging stations in the parking lot. We'll also redo all the landscape lighting paths and all of the drainage. And of course, this is one of the most historic and visited sites in town, so it's an important part of our historic district. So a quick geographic overview. This area in gold here is the actual dam, according to dam safety. So when you drive in to the park through Spring Lane, this is the actual dam. This area in blue is the nature-like fishway. This area in blue is the nature-like fishway that we'll be constructing, and I'll speak more about that. And then we've broken the entire area from the grist mill down to Brewster Gardens into landscape areas, and I'll show you some of the details in which we'll be reconstructing it, so you can see what it would look like.
Dave?
Yes.
David, on that, can you go back? Can, you have a laser, correct?
Yes.
Could you just show us, you mentioned the two trees. You said one was just removed, and where is the remaining one? And with respect to the, I'm assuming it's the gold area?
Correct. This is, this is the dam structure itself. This is the mill. There are two trees in close proximity to themselves, right on the backside of the dam, adjacent to the mill.
Oh, on the back, so it's not like...
On the downstream side.
It's not like driving in, you weren't referring to the one that was just removed on the right?
No. That had health issues when it was recently removed. That is not one I'm referring to.
Okay, thank you.
So just very quickly, we've broken these areas from the grist mill down to Brewster Gardens into these landscape areas, and I'll go through those very quickly, so you can see some of the things that we're proposing. Existing site conditions, so you can see what we're talking, this is the upstream side of the dam itself. This concrete structure is the actual upstream side of the spillway. There's a fish ladder here, as well as the main spillway. These are the wing walls, and you can see the undersized riprap on the upstream slope. Where I mentioned it has seepage issues on this downstream side, this is where you would walk down the path and towards the mill, this major seepage work that needs to be done here. That will require us to essentially deconstruct that area and rebuild it. One of the challenges about this site is there's an awful lot of utilities within the dam structure itself, including this rather infamous utility pole that also blocks access and forces people into the roadway, as opposed to utilizing the sidewalk. And that utility pole also has a transformer. We'll be relocating those wires in that transformer pad will be mounted on the opposite side of the street, upgrading outside of what is considered to be the dam structure by dam safety. These are some of the existing conditions as you walk by the mill. This is the actual walkway, and on the downstream side, you'll see a small weir. This is a very, a combination of stone, concrete, and wood weir. That is in pretty rough condition, and we'll also be replacing that.
With what?
It will be a concrete structure that will have some water control boards that we can operate that water and move water through that area. Currently, we have to lift up approximately twelve concrete slabs up to there every spring and take them out every fall by hand. This is the downstream end of Town Brook. This is some invasive aquatic vegetation, including the Japanese dawthweed on the bank. While we won't be able to address all the invasive plants, we'll be able to do some significant improvement to the water quality. You can see how that's just completely overgrown and really poor with dissolved oxygen. This is the path. This time of year, that gets extremely treacherous because any water you see on it freezes over and becomes a real hazard and very treacherous to walk on. This is a great photo, just after completion of the grist mill itself. And other than the fact that there's a very cool Volkswagen Beetle in the photo, it also shows a great path and how open that pathway was. And to some extent, this is what we're looking to try and replicate, is this openness in terms of getting people to be able to walk all the way through, by the mill, through the area and down to Brewster Gardens. This is currently what you have now, which is some broken-up asphalt leading to a rather small car path where cars park and dumpsters. So if you didn't know you could walk by there, maybe you don't. If you do, those are the sort of obstacles you currently have. We've been working with both of the property owners on either side. They've been incredibly helpful and supportive of the project to date, and we hope to improve this area, not only for the residents and the tourists that walk it, but for the two property owners. So we're working through some easement issues with them, and they've been, they've been helpful to date on the project. So what this site would look like, this is, these are some renderings of what the bypass would look like in this area. So you can see what was Lucius, this is a little bit dated of an image here, but you can see the bypass going past the mill. This is Spring Lane here. There would be a five-by-two-and-a-half-foot box culvert that would convey water from Jenny Gris Mill to the bypass. That nature-like fishway is about five-hundred-and-thirty feet long. This upper half that you're seeing is about a 1.15% slope. The lower half is about a 1.5% slope, which are ideal conditions for passage of diadrus fish like river herring and nail wife, which is what we're going for here. It's a highly technical fishway. It's been reviewed by NOAA staff, National Marine Fisheries staff, USGS Conti Lab, as well as Division Marine Fisheries. For fish nerds like me, there's a fifty-seven-page hydraulic report that goes along with it that speaks to how it was engineered and designed. So there's quite a bit of work and effort just in the design of this, this technical fishway. You will be able to walk by that and see the fish migrating upstream and downstream. We'll also be relocating the sewer line that is there into the walkway, so DPW will be able to access it. Right now, there are a couple of spots where it's completely inaccessible for them, so we'll be improving that.
Mr. Mahoney? David, you said the box culvert is five-by-two-and-a-half?
Correct.
So five foot wide?
Five feet wide, two-and-a-half feet high.
Two-and-a-half, the depth of, that's the area that water will be able to flow through?
Correct. That will be underneath Spring Lane and convey water from Jenny to the bypass. As you can see, this is Spring Lane going into the park. This is the mill. This is the water wheel. This is the pool that they currently have. The bypass channel will convey down here, and you'll have walkways for people to continue to walk back and forth. We'll be doing all the seepage repair work in here, and we'll rebuild it when we're done. Since we're going to be disturbing it, we'll be able to rebuild it in a way that is now ADA accessible for people, so they'll be able to get from the pass to and from, which will be ADA compliant. And we'll also be able to just build a small, little amphitheater area for people who want to do any sort of activity at Plymouth Batuxit. They'll have a little facility there that they can do education or music or whatever they're looking to do there as part of that location. We have one of these for each landscaped area. These are actually details with all the plants. I'm not going to show you each one, but just the level of detail that we've gone into, where we've shown every single plant, every single species, what it looks like. This was part of going through all the permitting, including historic districts, so pretty detailed. This is the bypass area. So this image is, if you're walking downstream past the grist mill and aiming towards Brewster Gardens, this is what you're going to see instead of those, those wet, frozen paths. These are walkways. They incorporate new brick as well as reclaimed brick. The walkway will be ADA accessible. There's also reclaimed granite that we've used on other projects that we'll be utilizing. And you can see the number of plantings and design elements that we've put into it. So it's a pretty detailed amount of work. It should be a much nicer attraction for people walking to and from the waterfront and the historic district. These are, again, some of the elements that we've included. We've worked with Melissa Costa from Plymouth Batuxit, member of the Wampanoag tribe, as well as Melissa Freddie, member of the Wampanoag tribe, on some of these elements to also highlight some of the Wampanoag history here. This is a We Too Arbor structure that we'll incorporate, as well as some crushed quahog shells in some of the pathways. So there's a lot of mill history here, but we'll also try to incorporate some of the Wampanoag history, as this is a very important location for them in Plymouth as well. You can see some of the other landscape elements and designs. These lights are reminiscent of what's actually down at Pilgrim Memorial State Park. We'll carry those through the site. It's very unique, and we think much more fitting than what's there now around the This is the area, if the grist mill is right about where the red dot is, this is going up to Market Street, where we do those paths and make those ADA compliant. There's approximately two trees that need to be removed as part of this entire project. So most of what you see out there in terms of trees and vegetation can stay, but the paths will be enhanced and made ADA compliant, and that will continue all the way down to Market Street and Main Street Extension. Market Street Extension, heading towards Main Street Extension, excuse me, there's the walkway that goes over the three small streams that come out of the bank. We'll actually create a small elevated boardwalk over those, so the water will run underneath and therefore will not get wet, muddy, or icy. It's a concrete walk that will look like a boardwalk and therefore will have longevity, but will be much more accessible for people to walk. We'll do some drainage improvements, as shown here. We'll replace all the handrails underneath both bridges to make those compliant and make a much better lighting as you walk along the path as well into Brewster Gardens. And again, these are showing some of the railings, some of the design elements that we'll be incorporating, and doing everything from trying to make the path look a little bit more like a walk in the woods, as opposed to just typical concrete. And we're doing quite a few things for kids to be able to see animal tracks and fish along the way and actually learn something about the ecology of the area in the town in which they grew up in. So a little bit about funding for the bypass. In the dredging project that's going on, we received $10 million from NOAA for this project. 1.1 million will go towards the current dredging project. The remainder will go to the bypass. It's important to note that everything that then gets impacted by the bypass channel can also be covered by NOAA funding, so things like that sewer main are actually being relocated because that's where the bypass is going. NOAA will pay for the sewer main replacement as part of this project. So there's a lot more that goes into this project with that funding. We have 1.5 million from CPC for the trail work. That is also in hand. And as I mentioned, we have a capital request of significant value that we'll put forward for spring, and that is 6.7 million for the dam repairs. That is a large number. We totally understand that. I will, I will also reiterate, other than some placement of riprap, I'm not sure any upgrades have ever been done on this structure. So there's a lot of work to do on the dam. As for schedule, we hope to be able to commence work after Labor Day of 2025. We have tight time-of-year windows to do in-water work and the stream work and anything that produces silt, so we need to do that through the winter. So we hope to do that next fall, winter, and into the spring. So some of the challenges, again, obviously, we need approval of the dam repair monies at town meeting. As I mentioned, we're working through the final easements. One of the challenges with the easements that I mentioned, I started talking with Dr. Kressman, who then sold the property to Dr. Phan and Dr. Schmidt, and I've been talking to them, and I began talking with the owner of the mill at the time, who's Mr. Stefani, who then sold it. So we've done the negotiations not twice, but four times, but I think we're, we're getting very close. Some of the logistical challenges, I mentioned time of year, no one wants us doing this work in the summer or in the tourist season, and then we're essentially restricted to fall and winter, which is always a challenge. And again, physical room, we have some very narrow corridors, lots of old utilities and old infrastructure, and of course, everything we're doing is surrounded by either groundwater or surface water. So typical challenges, we'll work very hard to limit impacts to the parking and the business access, and that's sort of what we'll be going through in the next month or two with the owners to make sure that we can ensure that their businesses can remain open and people can get to them. So we'll be working through those challenges over the next month or two as we finalize the plans. With that, I'm going to switch very quickly to the Morton Park culverts. There are two culverts that exist in the back entrance of Morton Park. Both are weight-restricted. We have received $2 million already in hand from Federal Highway Funds for one of them, and we'll have a capital request at town meeting for the remaining funding to replace both. That would be a request of 3.3 million. Again, the schedule's going to likely coincide also with when we're doing the Jenny Pond dam work, so it'll be a very busy fall, winter, and spring, and essentially, and approximately around 2027, when we're doing the twenty-fifth anniversary of when we first started doing all this work on Town Brook. So I guess that speaks how slow we work, but it's taken 25 years, and we're almost there. I mentioned we received some funding. We received $2 million in Federal Highway money. That was part of the buy infrastructure law. You can see most of the projects that were funded were on the Pacific Northwest. It started originated in Washington State for salmon passage, but we were, in fact, eligible, so we did apply. You can see Maine did quite well. There's one project in Massachusetts, which is us, and then one in North Carolina and one in Virginia, but we were successful in getting $2 million to offset the cost. So we'll certainly take that. You can see there's one project in Mass, that was the $2 million that we received. And just briefly, I'm just going to show you these two culverts, so you'll know what we're referring to. This is an old postcard of this image. That structure still exists to this day. It's quite beautiful. It's actually this beautiful arch culvert over Town Brook in the rear entrance of Morton Park. You can see how small it is and undersized, and that's one of the issues. It also has no structural concrete or steel or rebar in it, which is quite astonishing, and has a weight limit on it now and is in need of replacement. We'll be reusing all of those stones on the new facade. We'll try to keep as much of the historic look as we can. It's a beautiful structure. I feel bad replacing it, but it's, its life is, is over essentially. It needs to be redone. There's also a smaller, I'm sorry, this is looking upstream. The arch culvert is right here. There's another water control structure just downstream that we'll also remove. That's another constriction to Town Brook, and not only fish passage, but flood events will want to remove that. This is looking downstream at that same structure towards Route 3. This is the small box culvert. This box culvert does not pass any diadrus fish and therefore wasn't eligible for any additional funding. But this is another culvert that exists over the rear entrance to Morton Park that we also want to replace. That one has, currently has a steel plate over it to ensure vehicles can pass over it. Otherwise, it would have to be closed. And again, that one is in dire need of replacement as well. In conclusion, both of these projects are being submitted as capital requests in the spring. Both address public safety needs, one to bring the dam into compliance and two to replace the two weight-restricted culverts. Both of the projects also have significant environmental and resiliency benefits to them, not only passing diadrus fish, but helping with flood events and the culverts being undersized and restricting stream flow. And both have significant grant awards. The bypass in dam repairs at $10 million and the culvert's at $2 million. And with that, if you have any questions, I will attempt to answer them.
Mr. Canty, and then Mr. Mahoney?
Thank you, David. I appreciate the presentation, as always. In regards to the fish bypass, my understanding from going from past herring run events is that the fish naturally seek out a, the path where the water is flowing. My understanding is also that the mill will still be operated, so there'll still be some water flowing that way, I assume, right? Even with the bypass, the mill will still be getting some water from Town Brook?
Yes.
So will some fish choose to go that way and, or will every, will the fish naturally self-correct to the stronger stream, I guess?
So the downstream culvert that I mentioned, or ware structure that I mentioned that we were replacing, the one that was that combination of concrete, stone, and wood?
Yep.
Actually acts as a barrier, so the fish can't get up underneath the grist mill, so they would be forced into the existing fish ladder. That will remain in place.
Okay.
The fish ladder will be turned off, and the bypass actually connects right at that location, so that... I might have gone too far. So that they enter into the bypass channel. Let me see if I can find that for you. And just on the downstream side of that weir that I mentioned, that's where the bypass will tie in. Fish will feel that flow coming through that area and then enter up into the bypass channel there.
Okay. So you said the fish ladder will still be there?
It will still be there, but we'll turn it off. So we won't have water flowing through it.
Okay.
So the fish won't be attracted to it. One of the most important things about getting fish to pass is what we call attraction flow, and so you want the majority of the flow coming from the bypass channel to attract the fish up into it.
Right. That's, that's how they determine where they're going.
The vacant fish ladder will still be an option to send water through in a case of emergency. It just becomes one more way that we can pass water through that dam in an event of a, a large storm event.
And that's why we're keeping?
That's why we're keeping it.
Okay, that was going to be my natural follow-up question.
Yep.
Okay. So that's good to know. Now, we just recently approved a mural elsewhere on Town Brook. Will that area be undisturbed by, obviously, this mural's not going to be there for forever. It's going to be there for a time period, but we might do another one. Will that area be affected at all by these restoration?
The mural on the wall will not be. We'll do some improvements to the surf. We'll do some improvements to the surface and replace the railing.
Okay.
By mounting the railing on the side, we add another six inches of walkable space.
Okay.
So we'll be doing that work, but the actual wall structure with the mural is will not be disturbed.
Okay, great.
David, so just focusing on the grist mill project, any of the walkway materials, you're mentioning granite and brick, are those coming from our current inventory up at the water barn?
Yes, the landscape architect and I have marked all the ones that we want. I think we're at 36 different pieces of granite that are all marked and segregated out at the water barn. So those are already marked and segregated. And then over the summer, we'll be palletizing some of the brick. We'll be using both new brick and new pavers, but a couple of sections along the walkway will have the older brick, just like we used at homes. And so we'll start separating some of that.
Okay. On this project, I saw 10 million from the feds, one and a half from the town of Plymouth, an additional ask from the town of Plymouth five months from now. Where's the Commonwealth?
So we did ask, so the Commonwealth has provided a little over 120,000 towards the dam design for the engineering and the repairs. They have done that. I will also say that to date, everything that you've seen in terms of engineering permitting, no general fund money from the town has been used. It's either been state grant money or environmental affairs funds and some other grants that we've achieved. So to date, the town hasn't spent any general fund money on this project. We did apply for a million dollar grant from the state to go towards dam repairs, but we did not receive that.
Okay. So from the Atlantic Ocean to Billington, fish comes up and they're traveling a mile and a half, two miles to get to Billington?
1.7, yes.
1.7, okay. So in 99, 1999 or 2000, before you started all this work on Town Brook, how many obstructions or hurdles were there between the Atlantic Ocean for that fish, a fish, to get to Billington?
Six.
Six. And this is the last one, right?
Correct.
Okay. So if we're standing in the brook downstream from the grist mill, is that historical flow of that former stream, because we know that Jenny Pond is man-made, does that still... Is that kind of where the stream was 400 years ago at that, if you go upstream a couple hundred yards and over to Willard?
Yeah, that's the approximate location. I'm sure it's moved around as any stream does, but that's the approximate location. The only thing that would be significantly different about that would probably be when you get to, when you get to Main Street Extension, Brewster Gardens, as you all know, was an estuary.
Okay.
Subject to tides and flooded out. And so it wasn't land like we have now with the park. It was just estuary and open water.
All right, so I guess what I'm driving at is that you've removed successfully five of the six barricades in the last 20 years or so. This is the last one. Why is it not removal? Is it cost? I'm assuming if we remove the dam, we lose the pond? And also, I know that the grist mill still uses water power to grind or mill flour or corn or whatever they do with that giant stone. So if you have a stream, do you lose the ability to move the wheel which moves the stone? And philosophically, how did you arrive at the decision to head down this path and not complete removal?
No, it's a great question. Dam removal is always the best option. It just always is in terms of fish and wildlife and water quality improvements. Here, we didn't go down that road for a multitude of reasons. One, the first one being historic, so most of the dams that we removed have been from 1790s to early 1800s vintage. There's been a dam at Jenny in some iteration going back to 1636. So that's even significantly more historic. The mill does still use the water power to grind the corn and use the wheel. That was a historic and educational piece that we didn't want to lose. Then there's the whole issue of if you remove a dam here with the grist mill and the restaurant immediately behind it, and how do you drop the elevation going back and grading out the whole new stream channel that you would have to do through Jenny and be able to convey essentially a whole stream underneath those two buildings and not cause significant damage to those buildings, not only in the immediate sense, but during large storm events. So very limited space, very constrained. We really didn't want to do that challenge. If I was requesting a dam removal here, that's probably significantly more than the 6.7 based on all the other structural concerns that we would have with the buildings. The passage ideally would be with a dam removal. That would be the best way to pass fish here. We do have a bypass channel, a nature-like fishway, that we think is going to pass way more fish than the current fish ladder. So that would be the next best alternative, and that's what we went with.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Canty. David, thank you for being here tonight. This was a great presentation. I know you're very excited about this project as we've talked about it a few times. Your last slide talked about the benefits in terms of infrastructure and environment, but I think you undersold it a little bit because I think this has some incredible cultural, aesthetic, and economic benefits to the community as well, culturally in terms of the incorporation of indigenous iconography. Can you go back to the rendering from above of the area that abuts the grist mill? A little further back. Yeah, so this and then the overhead of it shows some space that I think we're going... Yeah, that's the one. This little amphitheater area, this is going to be some incredible community space when this project is completed. And then obviously, you've seen the renderings and the intended plantings that'll go in there. So this is really about branding Plymouth and branding this area a bit better. You've done an awesome job putting together some preferred furnishings and flourishes for each of the different areas throughout this project. Could you talk a little bit about, you know, how you went about incorporating some of these elements and what you think might be the economic benefit to this area?
Yeah, so it's an amazing sort of corridor, not only for fish wildlife, but obviously people who traverse back and forth through this area all the time. And the historic nature of the area, when you look at it, as much as it's one of my favorite places in town, there's a lot, it's pretty worn out in a lot of places. And so being able to have the opportunity to rebuild it in a really improved way was pretty exciting. We work with some really great landscape architects. We work with really good historic and archaeological staff. And so we try to incorporate a lot of the older materials, the granite, the stone. We try to replicate a lot of the existing stonework there. You can see when you walk in a spring lane, instead of seeing asphalt or concrete walkways, these are going to be brick pavers. They're going to replicate what would have most likely been in that area. There's actually some raised crosswalks that have really nice materials based into them. We've changed the lighting to look more unique to the grist mill area. The pathways are concrete that have been dyed a dark tan. They have pebbles in them, so it feels more like a walkway through the woods, like where you are. And so we're doing everything we can to make this a really stunning area, not just for visitors to Plymouth, but for all the residents who walk and run and hike in this area. And of course, in the springtime, when the fish are running, it's incredibly busy. And of course, that only enhances the value of the grist mill and the historic site there. So it was actually a lot of work, but it was certainly a lot of fun to work on as well. And I think it's going to transform and really change people's opinions of what Jenny Park looks like because when we're done dredging with the new footbridge and the new walkways over there, you're then going to come here and it's going to be completely different from the mill all the way to Brewster Gardens.
Yeah, I agree. And I think it will really elevate the feeling in that area. I also want to commend you on the level of fundraising you've done without putting the burden on the taxpayer. It's quite a lot, as we saw through this presentation, in terms of grant writing and obtaining funds from various sources. We will need some money from Town Meeting to complete some of these projects, and I hope that for those who are in the room and those who are watching at home, they're taking note because this is an incredible project for the town of Plymouth and will benefit innumerably, infrastructure, environmental, culturally, quality of life, and obviously economically.
You always wish it could be more grant money, but, you know, 12 million is pushing our limits. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
David, I got a question for you. A year ago, I went down there with you and we talked to the owner of the business down there, Gillis, and we were showing the project, what was going to happen down there. Is the water still going to flow under the building? Or is it, I know it's being redirected, but is it still going to flow?
That is the main spillway, so the water will still flow there. It will still also be diverted to a sluice way that the mill can operate to obtain the small, they actually use a very small amount of water to actually turn the wheel. That water will all remain the same.
But will it lower a little bit under the building?
One of the, ironically, one of the interesting components is a lot of groundwater that comes through that hillside and seeps into the building. By putting the fish ladder in, we're going to actually capture all that groundwater and get it into the bypass. So it'll be more likely to get captured in the bypass and go out to Town Brook as opposed to underneath.
So that's going to help on the wear and tear on that building?
Absolutely.
Which was exciting. And I can just tell you, as I said the other day at the ground break, and, you know, this is not just a beautification project, and it is. I mean, it's going to be absolutely beautiful. Those pictures show it right there, that little amphitheater. By the way, I think that's private property. I'm not sure.
There is some private property there, but we're going to have to disturb it to fix the dam.
No, but I don't know how much community, but certainly tourists and residents.
Yep.
Part Texans there and the restaurants there and everything else. But, you know, this project, it's not only helping the wildlife, what you're doing, you know, the open space folks are excited. You're improving that open space area. And it's going to help the businesses. It's going to help our tourism, which is our number one industry. It's going to bring money to the town. The walkway, I mean, I've walked it from Billington all the way down, and it was kind of dangerous a little bit. Now it's going to be handicap accessible and it's going to be beautiful. And I'll tell you, the residents are going to be excited to be able to use that and people that are visiting that want someone for a beautiful walk, historic walk. So it checks all the boxes off. But I just want to give you a pat on the back for the way you collaborated. You know, you worked with the DPW, the forestry, you know, you guys all work together. You should be commended for that. The grant, Tiffany, with the grant writing, I mean, it's everybody working together. And also, I saw firsthand the way you went down and you talked to the business down there and kept them informed. And, you know, the parking situation was the latest, and you actually went down there and you talked with the business and explained that much first, that dredging will stop and you'll be able to pick up probably more parking at that point.
Yep.
It was a good job doing that, so.
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you. And as David said, I don't see how anybody can have a problem with this. This is a positive thing for the town.
Thank you.
Mr. Canty?
It occurs to me that it might be worth emphasizing the importance of the migratory fish, both ecologically and culturally. Would you like to inform us of the importance of that to Plymouth?
Sure. So as you know, Town Brook has what we refer to as diadrus fish, which are fish that will live in the ocean but spawn in freshwater. So they'll come up in the springtime, swim up Town Brook in the Billington Sea and spawn. The juveniles will over-summer essentially in the headwater ponds and outmigrate. Approximately three to four years later, they come back as adults. They have what we call a high fidelity rate to their natal stream. So over 90% of those fish will come right back to their natal stream, which is pretty unique, unlike salmon. They can come back multiple times to spawn. I think of all the historic things in Plymouth, that run is the same run that was here when the pilgrims were here, when the Wampanoags had been here. It's important to them culturally. It's still something that I get excited about, and I see a lot of people get excited in the springtime who walk along Town Brook and you can hear everybody saying, are the fish running yet? Is the fish running yet? It's a great way to end a long New England winter, sort of a start of springtime when those fish move. And to this day, people get excited biologically. It moves marine resources up into our watersheds, into our freshwater watersheds, which is incredibly important. They also take a lot of nutrients out with them, which is pretty unique. So those are the forage fish that support, you know, striped bass and blues and all the juveniles outmigrate at the same time that shorebirds are migrating south. So they're feeding on those juvenile fish, so they're supporting migratory birds. So as a forage fish, they're incredibly important to many different resources, not only here in Plymouth, but along the entire coast. So anything we could do to boost that population. And I think to John's point, when we started, we were about 25,000 fish in this run. We're now averaging about 200,000 to 225,000 fish. So it has worked.
And every spring, there's the Herring Run Festival that brings, obviously, a lot of Plymouthians participate in that.
Yep.
Also brings people to the town. And I know there's people spending a lot of time counting fish and people get a kick out of that. So it is, in and of itself, a tourism benefit, just the existence of the Herring Run itself, right?
I think the Herring Run is sort of an economic engine of itself in the springtime. A lot of people will come to Plymouth just to have lunch and see the fish, so.
Yes, yes. And this will only make them more able to see more of them and in a much more beautific setting. So I appreciate that. And I would echo the words of my colleagues about your grant funding. I think having spent the last 11 years or so delving into the town's finances in one form or another, I think we'd be hard pressed to find a department that has done more to remove the burden on the residential taxpayer of Plymouth or commercial taxpayer, as we saw earlier, than your folks. You've always leveraged your money with state, federal, and other funding sources, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mahoney? David, just building on what you just said, last question. You referenced how years ago was down to 25,000 fish, and you're saying now it's up to 200, 250. What would it have been 50 or 60 years ago? And if this project is complete, is there somebody crunching numbers to say what you can expect 10 or 20 years from now? Are they telling you it should get up to 400, 600, or you can get back to a million? Do people run those numbers?
So I suspect this run was probably somewhere between 715,000 to a million fish during the best of times. Now, what's unique about these fish is they live in freshwater part of the year and the ocean part of the year. So, you know, 10 months of the year, they're in the ocean. We have lots of fishing vessels that could be capturing them. There's obviously lots and lots of ocean predators that could be eating these fish. So there's lots of challenges to determine what you think your size run could be. But I think if we can continue with this run the way it's progressed, it could probably get up to 300, 400,000 fish. I would say that's pretty significant. That little run that you see in Town Brook every year, like this past year, was the sixth largest herring run in the Commonwealth, considering it goes through an urbanized area in the downtown, and it's only 1.7 miles long is pretty impressive, yeah. You're welcome.
Now, I echo the whole board, David. You know, I appreciate everything that you and your department does for the town.
Thank you.
I always have.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ocean View North, 40B. Welcome.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, before we turn over to Pulte, just to circle back, as you all recall, Pulte Holmes was before the board a few weeks ago to present the 150-unit project over on Hedge Road. They're back again this evening to further discuss the consideration of the board for a letter of support for their project. We have in the audience with us this evening, as you all know, Director of Planning Lee Hartman and Attorney Callan Murray from KP Law, who are here to answer any questions specifically around the project in and of itself or the 40B process. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Derek. Thank you, board members and other members of the audience for inviting us back tonight to fill in some gaps and provide some more detail on the project. So just before we get too far, I just want to again note some of the other professionals that we are working with on our team. engineered to the highest standards. TEC is doing our site design civil engineering. Pete Ellison is here with us tonight that can answer any of your questions regarding civil engineering. MDM Transportation is doing our traffic and transportation impact analysis, and Bob Michaux is here with us tonight, and he will be presenting to you as well. LEC is handling our natural resource evaluation, identification, and analysis. Weston and Sampson has been doing our wastewater and water engineering, and Smolak and Vaughn is handling all of our legal services. Just a quick reminder, or for those who may not have been able to join us at our first meeting, the project site is located in North Plymouth. The site itself is broken up into three distinct areas, as noted in the graphic on the right. Site number one is accessed off of Court Street. Number two is at the end of Prince Street on the left side of the roadway, and then number three is at the end of Sandry Drive, where there is currently a vacant industrial warehouse office building. So just a quick refresher on the project details. The three distinct sites total approximately nine acres. We are proposing all home ownership condominiums. It is made up of 150-unit building on each of the sites, so three total buildings, 150 total units. 38 of those units will be affordable. Each of the buildings are made up of a mix of one, two, and three bedroom units. There is also garage under parking, and vehicular access is off of three separate streets, including Court Street, Prince Street, and Sandry Drive. Buildings one and two consist of four floors of residential over a garage under, and then due to site characteristics, building three is, is four floors of residential over podium or at-grade parking. And as Derek mentioned, thank you again, what we're asking for from the board tonight is to authorize the town to enter into a development agreement with us, and partner with us to make this 40B project mutually beneficial as possible to the residents and to the community. We at Pulte are committed to planning, developing, and constructing home ownership units here in Plymouth that we are proud of, that reflect a collaborative approach with the community, and that the future homeowners feel lucky to call home. At our previous meeting, we received a lot of great feedback from the board, as well as a few public commenters. Additionally, we met with the North Plymouth Steering Committee earlier this year, and we've had numerous meetings with town officials, including those in the Planning Department, Department of Public Works, Natural Resources, Fire Department, and the Police Department. And throughout all of those meetings, we've received significant feedback, both in quantity and quality. And based on that feedback, we've coordinated with town departments to identify a series of developer contributions that, through that collaboration, we all agreed would provide a benefit to the community and our neighbors through considerable local infrastructure investment. These are items that would provide a direct benefit to our neighbors, as well as our future homeowners, and they would directly address goals and objectives of various municipal departments. These are all items that the town has identified as areas of need. I wanna walk through each of these four major areas in detail, excuse me, but just note that the value of the total contributions is approximately 1.15 million. And what we are asking for, again, is for the town to agree to enter into a friendly 40B with us, in addition to waive the water fees associated with the affordable units located in the project, which would total approximately $150,000. We identified these fees in particular because we are offering significant investment into the municipal water infrastructure, and felt that that was applicable. As I noted earlier, Weston and Sampson is on our project team, and their primary area of focus is water and wastewater. They've done a lot of work with the town of Plymouth, and they're quite familiar with the water and sewer infrastructure networks. They're also very familiar with the recent water system, system master plan, and the various improvement items that were identified within that plan. As part of their analysis for the project, they used the town's hydraulic model to conduct an analysis of the municipal water network to identify the existing water pressures in the area, to verify that it was sufficient to support the demand that would be created as part of the project. What their analysis showed is that the existing network does have sufficient pressures and capacity to serve the project as it's currently proposed. Additionally, we also asked them to, during their analysis, develop any potential recommendations for improvements to the infrastructure based on that analysis, but also through their coordination with DPW. In that coordination, the town indicated that the existing water main located on Prince Street, it's asbestos cement pipe, and replacing that AC pipe with ductile iron is a high priority. Prince Street has approximately 1,200 linear feet of AC pipe running from the intersection at Court Street to approximately the hydrant at the end of the cul-de-sac. We feel it would be an immediate benefit to the town, as well as our direct neighbors, by offering to install a new ductile iron pipe the length of Prince Street, and then providing a complete mill and overlay of the roadway, once the infrastructure is complete. In addition to the Prince Street water main replacement, we have identified another municipal water network benefit that we feel we could help address. Currently, the Prince Street water main deadens at the end of Prince Street, as I mentioned, as a hydrant at the, at that cul-de-sac. The adjacent water network to the north currently includes system connectivity through Hedge Street, or excuse me, along Hedge Road, Court Street, and then north to Quordage Park. We are proposing to provide a new water main loop, connecting Prince Street water main to the Hedge Road water main. The loop would be approximately 850 feet in a length, in length. It's schematically shown in this location here, that connection doesn't currently exist. Schematically, that's the, the loop that we are proposing. And that 850 feet in length would create, create much needed redundancy in the water network in the area. Combination of the Prince Street water main replacement with this water main loop, these infrastructure investments would provide significant boost to water flow and improvement in water quality for the area residents. Another item that came up repeatedly in conversations with the community, as well as with municipal departments, is the North Plymouth Rail Trail. The trail currently intersects with Hedge Road as an independent shared-use path. From there, the town recently completed a section of sidewalk that carries the trail down Hedge Road to Sandry Drive. Then the trail continues along Sandry Drive, as you can see in this bottom right picture, as striping along the pavement, leading to a gravel path that eventually leads to the waterfront along Quordage Park. Based on discussions with DPW, we are offering a more, to provide a more formal path along this Sandry Drive section between Hedge Road and the off-road path to Quordage Park, really essentially replacing that section of path as delineated with just striping on, on the pavement with a grade-separated path. Based on our initial analysis, we believe that we could have a grade-separated shared-use path that matches the cross-section of the path between Hedge Road and Nelson Park. Our first priority is to provide enough access along Sandry Drive for our building as required by Plymouth Fire Department, and then whatever is remaining of that access, we are prepared to commit to the completion and the formalization of that Sandry Drive section of the rail trail with a, again, a grade-separated shared-use path. Based on what we know, we anticipate it'll be between eight and 10 feet, but we need to do some additional survey, 'cause the roadway does jog in that area, just to verify. And then the final item that, from a mitigation perspective that we wanted to talk about tonight, came through some lengthy conversations with emergency services, DPW, and other departments in town, and includes a formalized emergency signal for the Hedge Road fire station at the intersection with Court Street. The final concept that we have included in this package was designed by MDM, and it was vetted with the town's peer review consultant, GPI, as well as with the Fire Department and DPW. Bob is gonna talk about this in much more detail and context with some other traffic analysis items, so at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Bob, as I know that he wanted to talk through some other items, traffic-related items.
Thank you, board members, again, Bob Michaux, Managing Principal of MDM Transportation Consultants. Really, I wanted to just recap three questions that the board had, so that it gives you some sense that we're attempting very much to collaborate with the town and provide answers. And I wanna emphasize that while Pulte is here to solicit input and feedback and support from the Board of Selectmen, we're very much at the beginning of a months-long process where that collaboration is gonna continue. We're gonna continue to have conversations with police, fire, public works, planning, and other departments as we proceed, but I wanted to give some reassurance to the board that the process that we've used so far is very much in line with industry standards and practices, and the numbers that we're relying on are, in fact, real numbers. The first comment and question that the board had was, you know, is what you're proposing reasonably accounting for the amount of traffic, the amount of impact that these development parcels are likely to have on the community, right? So trip generation, is that a valid number? I don't need to get into the machinations of that, but the, really, the answer is that based on real-life examples, which I'll present in a moment, that the estimates we're using are very much in line with reality. They will be subject to peer review, they will be subject to scrutiny at the local level, and we welcome that, and we, we believe that we're on the right track here. Second, we wanna talk a little bit about what initiatives are already in place to address Court Street traffic in particular, that's a real concern of the community, and it's an issue that's being addressed in, in real time, not directly by this project, but by prior mitigation commitments by others, specifically CVS, and advanced plans that the town is, is now in receipt of. And third, that, as Essex had pointed out, we continue the collaborative discussions with departments to identify real, meaningful improvements, particularly safety-related improvements that can be brought to bear and supported by this project, which is the Hedge Road and Court Street signal. Just very briefly, our firm has a number of different projects that we have a lot of data for that are of similar scale or type to that being proposed. Traditionally, these types of residential developments are clustered with a single point of access. An example of that would be this is in Braintree, Jonathan's Landing, some 318 units. We have a lot of data on this, this particular project was subject to a monitoring provision or requirement by Braintree, so we need to go back after the fact and actually measure its performance. At 318 units, its peak hour, highest hour generation is just about 100 or so vehicles per hour. We have another example in Framingham at 348 units along Route 9, which generates about the same amount of activity between 990 and 120 total vehicle trips per hour. Another, sorry, another in Braintree, the ridge at Blue Hills, this, scale-wise, is much more in line with what we're proposing, what Pulte anticipates. In North Plymouth, this is 186 units, it generates between 77 and 83 total peak hour trips. And then finally, more suburban location in Bedford Center, Bedford, Massachusetts, 121 units at generating between 53 and 54 vehicle trips during its peak hours. Where that all heads is, when you average that amount of known activity out on a per-unit basis, you, you end up with a result shown in the far right side of this histogram that shows that between 50 and 60 vehicle trips would be generated by a project of this type, which, when you look at empirical data and industry data, is highly consistent. Real-life examples are nearly identical to what industry standards, when they are applied to a project like this, would indicate, would occur. And I wanna emphasize that these peak hour numbers don't just come and go during a peak hour and disappear, what's shown here. And this histogram is real data for the Framingham example, where we have a lot of the hourly data broken down and applied to this project at 150 units, and you'll see in orange the two highest hours of what we're planning for, what we're evaluating, but it doesn't mean that that's the only period of time when traffic is generated. You'll see that building up to that weekday morning peak hour, you know, there, there are trips that eventually peak at that 50 to 60 vehicle number, and then come back down and are stable throughout the typical day, and then elevated again during a typical commuter hour, and then meter out to where they become minor at night. So we're, we're working with real information, and I wanna reassure the board that as we continue to evaluate this project and collaborate with departments, that we're at the beginning of the process, we're gonna be looking at, in great detail, at these numbers and how they apply to the potential impacts that a project like this would have in, in Plymouth. This is simply a tabulated version of the bar graphics that I just presented. So what we're talking about for impact is, in our view, a very modest impact that includes three separate distinct sites with three separate and distinct driveways, which in the aggregate altogether will generate somewhere around 60 vehicle trips per hour, which is exactly what we see at these other projects that I just mentioned earlier. So very manageable level of impact, dispersed impact among various intersections in and around town. One of the most significant initiatives the town has ongoing currently is for Court Street improvements at the signalized intersection at Prince Street and Cherry Street. CVS project, when it was under review, committed mitigation dollars that led to this design, which is now complete, and is ready to go to bid and construction. We expect the town will advance this in the near term, and that these improvements would be in place, you know, within the next two to three, three-year window in time for the opening of some of the projects that Pulte is proposing. This is a significant improvement because what it really does is it addresses head-on the congestion that happens at Court Street, particularly in the southbound direction. Anyone turning onto Prince Street today blocks through traffic, right? A single car can block that traffic. This addresses that. And the net result of that operationally is that we're gonna have really much improved operations. I don't need to get into the details of that, but it will significantly address the capacity and flow issues that we've heard repeatedly from departments and from this board has been a concern of the community. Finally, as it relates to Hedge Road at Court Street, this improvement plan addresses head-on the need for emergency response and the ability to get fire apparatus to Court Street. It is a mast arm, full signal, that would allow emergency vehicles and preemption, meaning an activated scenario, to have a green light, if you will, from Hedge Road to, to get onto Court Street, and for any of the traffic on Court Street to be stopped during that particular time. The activation of the signal would occur directly from the station itself, so there would be no delay in getting a vehicle from the station to Court Street. And I'll point out that the signal that I just spoke about at Prince and Cherry Street will be equipped with Opticom capability, so that the fire apparatus could essentially clear that intersection as well in real time, at the same time that this signal was being activated. So we've very much taken to, to heart the safety and access requirements that really would benefit if they were implemented today, they're certainly needed, but would become a reality as a, as a function of the Pulte commitment to the community. So with that, I'll hand it back to Essex for any questions the board might have. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Mr. Canty.
My questions would actually be for the traffic expert. So could you bring up the comparable communities again?
Yes.
You cited? So you got two in Braintree, you got one that's got an AM of 111, PM of 102, and has 318.
Yep.
You got the, the third one is also in Braintree, 83 in the morning, 77 in the evening, and that's 186 units. that's 186 units, so more comparable. But Braintree has MBTA bus service, MBTA Red Line service, and MBTA commuter rail service.
Correct.
So people commuting to a job in, say, Boston or elsewhere on the Red Line or the MBTA subway system may very well not need a car from a place up there because they could be on a bus route to get to that connection, right?
Correct.
Framingham is the second example that had 90 in the morning, 119 in the evening, 348 units. Framingham has MBTA commuter rail service directly through it.
Yes, although I live in Framingham, so this particular example is nowhere near where that commuter rail station is. It's not directly served. It's very difficult to go from here to there. You need to rely on a car to get to that rail station.
Mm-hmm.
I will point out as well, on the Jonathan's Landing facility, that's a half-mile from the MBTA station. The monitoring of that indicated that, to the extent folks actually use that mode of transportation, they actually use their car to go park at the garage at the T, which is half-mile away, particularly during inclement and shoulder seasons. And if you look at the, and we try to draw from a range of different types and locations of residential properties, this Ridged Blue Hills is nowhere near public transportation system, and the Bedford Center example not only is not served by public transportation, it is actually a mix of units that are more traditionally oriented toward single-family homes or townhouse-type development, which tend to have slightly higher traffic generation standards compared to multifamily.
But Bedford does have MBTA bus service.
They do, but it's...
And Red Line service.
Yeah, it's very lightly used based on census data, and it's not proximate to this particular example. So I guess, without getting into the machinations of every aspect of everyone, what we know is that there's a high level of consistency among all of these examples, whether or not they are proximate to public transportation, and that they are, in the aggregate, nearly identical to industry standards on an average basis that we're relying on and applying to the Plymouth example. I will point out, if you look at the example of Jonathan's Landing, which is a half-mile, you could walk to the MBTA station from here, that even if we were to apply this standard to the Plymouth model, the trip numbers that we're predicting, rather than being 56 trips per hour among all three buildings, would be 66 trips among all three buildings. So even in the example where we are to use the highest-per-unit trip standards, you know, that even in those examples, the number of trips that we're talking about is highly consistent with what we've been relying on. So whether it's 56 trips, or 66, or even 80 for that matter, the fact that there are three separate sites, three separate driveways, and that those cumulative trips are being dispersed among those three separate sites means that cumulatively, when you look at any particular intersection here, there's not a lot of, there's not a material impact to how traffic flows. However, we're not dismissing that improvements are necessary and appropriate, and so Pulte is very much looking to collaborate. We expect, anticipate, that during the local rigorous review process, which will be subject to peer review, that we may do sensitivity analysis for these same numbers that we're talking about to ensure that every rock is uncovered in terms of what the true or potential impact of the project would be. So, you know, rest assured, this is the beginning of the process, not the end. We'll be rigorously subject to analysis and peer review, independent peer review, to make sure that we're getting the analysis correctly calibrated and that the commitments that Pulte has before the board are appropriate and in line with its impact.
Sure. So it occurs to me that Plymouth, being part of the master plan committee hearing from our consultants about where our residents work, many of our residents that, in order to live in Plymouth, do not work in Plymouth. Now, not all of them commute. Some of them work remotely, and some of them no longer are in the workforce, so for one reason or another. But for those, many of those that do still work, they're commuting outside of this community to work. So I understand that there's a model that you're using, that's an industry-standard model, but the unique characteristics of Plymouth, I mean, many people in Plymouth to afford to be able to live in Plymouth have to commute to a Braintree, a Quincy, a Boston, or a Providence in order to have a job that pays them enough money to live in this community. So I guess, you know, Braintree, Braintree is obviously very easy to get to Quincy, Boston, if you need to, through other means other than traveling in a vehicle, if you so chose.
Right.
Bedford, Framingham, a little different, but I just, I don't find these communities to be particularly comparable to the characteristics of Plymouth and its workforce and where they're earning their incomes. So that's part of my, I understand it's an industry model. I understand that any industry-type model is not a perfect fit for the unique characteristics of any community. I just know we've seen other projects using that same industry model that have generated a lot more traffic, in reality, than projections suggested that they would, so that gives me pause. I also, I live in this area. I live in Precinct 1, so I see, in particular, an intersection that is of particular trouble is that of Cherry Street and Standish Ave, which is one removed from the Cherry Street intersection you're talking about. There's a school there, and there are three, so there's, one corner is Hedge School, and then the other three corners are homes, a single-family home and two duplexes, that have fences that I've never seen homeowners replace their fences as often as these people have to because of cars growing through that intersection right now, going into their lawn, crashing into their fences. And I think, I didn't see the accident happen, but I believe the traffic signal pole was just taken out again at Hedge School. It's being, it has cones up again. It's been taken out multiple times by drivers. So it's already a dangerous intersection there with, it's an elementary school, small kids are walking through there. So it's a particular concern, and that would be, one of the major routes to Route 3 is up Cherry Street. So I don't know how many of your, even if it is 56 cars, let's assume for the sake of argument it is, how many of them would be going that particular direction to get to Route 3, but it's already a strained intersection. So it gives me pause putting more cars through an already strained intersection that's already seeing significant signs of overactivity and irresponsible activity, particularly where small children are involved. And in terms of this peer review and the scrutiny, I mean, once you guys have the letter in hand, what is that going to do for us? We give you, we give you tonight the letter of support, right? Then there's, then you have that, and then the peer review and the scrutiny happens later. What's our recourse? We can't take it back.
Well, I think, and I'll let Essex expand on this, that I mentioned that we're at the beginning of the process and not the end. And what Pulte has done to date is really engage in departments to understand what their principal needs are, and part of that is driven from recent planning initiatives. The North Plymouth Circulation Study, for instance, has identified a range of, and priority of, actions that would be appropriate for area roadways, whether they're safety-related or capacity-related. And what Pulte has attempted to do is to identify, based on the priorities and indications at the departments, where dollars and effort really need to be prioritized. And, you know, Hedge Road and Court Street is an example of that, where we've heard loud and clear from day one, the need for emergency response, given the unique location of the fire department. It's ordinarily the case that you have a fire department right on a arterial roadway, and you can have direct access to an arterial or a major collector roadway. That doesn't exist for that relatively new station. They're on a side street, and they have difficulty getting out during an emergency response scenario. So that way, by way of priority, safety first, that's an immediate need. It's a recognized need in the North Plymouth Circulation Study. That process is what Pulte has been using to prioritize where its efforts are best spent. Cherry Street and Prince is already an initiative that the town has undertaken, recognizing the growth in the area and the quarter and the need to address these existing issues in Court Street. And just because we didn't discuss impacts beyond those locations doesn't mean that they won't ultimately be evaluated and studied as part of the local process. The peer review process is intended to inform the town as to whether or not the impact of the project has been comprehensively evaluated and that the outcome of mitigation is appropriately placed in context to the impact of the project. So while I think Pulte is seeking the support of the board at this point, it is not a closed door necessarily to its ongoing discussions with departments and its potential mitigation.
But say that peer review reaches the conclusion that it is, that the efforts that are being made are insufficient. What is step two?
Right. So our firm, during its due diligence for Pulte, goes through a process in which we identify what we would call materially impacted locations, which we've done. Those materially impacted locations would be Cherry, Prince, and Hedge's Road, beyond which, we're not saying impact doesn't occur, but that that next step in peer review would validate whether or not that's the case. So, you know, we're confident that what we've evaluated is appropriate, but I'll let Lee weigh in. Thank you.
All right, good. Lee Hartman, Director of Planning and Development for the town, and I'm going to look towards Carolyn to either nod yes, that I'm right, or no, that I'm a little off-track. So what will happen here is, you have a letter of support, if you choose to do that, that says, yes, we support this project. The next step from that would be for them to file a comprehensive permit, starts at the state level, then it would come to us after an eligibility letter is issued, and it goes to the zoning board. Zoning board acts as a one-stop permitting agency. They permit for anything, the planning board, Board of Health, Conservation Commission, typical zoning board stuff, they would act as a one-stop group to issue a comprehensive permit. At that point, when they file that, we will have, require them to do a peer review of everything. You know, they'll look at not just traffic, all the other information supplied. The ZBA at that point could require additional mitigation above and beyond what you do in your letter of support. My only caution about that, though, is if it's above and beyond and the applicant feels they're unreasonable, they can always go back to the state and say, this is uneconomical, the board is requiring too much, we would like you to, you, the state override the ZBA's decision. I would also say, the ZBA has the ability to deny the permit, too. Just because you support it doesn't force them to do it. It certainly minimizes the town's, the ZBA's ability to have that supported at any level, but they could do that. So again, your MOU and the thing you sign, if you choose to, says those things are the absolute minimum. Additional things can be required, but I want to do the caveat to say that through the 40B process, there's no guarantee that things above and beyond that, they can be imposed by the town, but if it's something that the developer's not mutually acceptable with, there is some gray area about how hard the state will, or how much the state will support those types of conditions.
Right. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, Lee, but the state is giving its preference for housing at the moment.
And yes, yes, in most cases, yes.
So say, say it came back that, just to throw a number out there, that there should be an extra $500,000 in mitigation efforts to make it so that this project isn't making traffic in this area any worse than it already is, once these numbers are factored in and once the mitigation steps are done. And then Pulte, for sake of argument, says to the state, that's uneconomical, can you override these guys, please? Thank you. What are the odds that the state would say, would stand up for us versus choose the housing developer?
Again, and I don't know, Carolyn, if you want to jump in, I'll let her jump in, but just your first assessment of, it's generally tilted towards the project, but...
Can I just, just address this for one second, too? Because we're talking about a potential for, you're mentioning a $500,000 mitigation item for something. If it's traffic-related and it's, you know, and we are working with our engineers and it's determined that it's a safety issue, it's not something that we are going to be comfortable putting in a housing development if there is an identified safety issue that is being directly related to our project. Again, we are going through all of the necessary engineering steps and analysis to identify the appropriate mitigation items to accommodate the project that we are proposing. Through what Bob's analysis has shown and through what the North Plymouth Downtown Circulation Study has identified, as well as what a peer reviewer would identify, it would be hard for us to design beyond that if we don't, if nothing is identified as mitigation measures that we are seeing that would be addressing a potential concern. But certainly, I want to make it clear that tonight, we are here asking to, for an agreement, for a cooperation, for us to work together. And we developed the list of mitigation items that we showed tonight through extensive coordination with town departments and, based on municipal needs, we narrowed that list down based on coordination with Bill Coyle, with James Downey, with others in the DPW that deal with traffic. And the list of items that we came down to was based on those coordination items and through a very lengthy discussion as far as what would be kind of the prioritization list, if you will. We are certainly, again, looking to enter into an agreement with the town where there would be a mutual back-and-forth and a cooperation on identifying if something adjusts as we go further along, that there are changes in that prioritization. It's something that we are, again, looking to have that back-and-forth collaboration with the town. So I just want to make it clear that, you know, based on the information that we know, what we are designing for is not creating or identifying or highlighting any potential issues. If that were the case, then we could adjust our approach, but right now, we have nothing to adjust that approach to. I don't know if you wanted to speak to...
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, Carolyn Murray from KP Law is your special counsel, and I just want to address the select board member's question. As you know, towns do not fare well at the Housing Appeals Committee, by and large. But that being said, one thing about, with respect to mitigation, as the prior speaker was saying, if we identify a legitimate health or public safety concern that should be addressed, that's going to bolster our arguments for why the mitigation might be necessary. Another thing that the 40B regulations require is that we have to treat a subsidized project, meaning a 40B, similarly to a non-subsidized project. So if this was strictly a market rate project, and if we were still saying to that developer, look, you have to make these roadway improvements here, or put a traffic light in, or widen the, make a new right-hand turn lane, or something like that, if that's something we would do regardless of the 40B process, that's also going to bolster our position at the HAC. But one thing that I just wanted to, if this provides any level of comfort to the board members, with respect to the memorandum of agreement, that is, before you this evening, seeking your approval, this is totally voluntary on the part of the board. Certainly, there's no, nothing compelling us to have to enter into an agreement. The developer could still go ahead and file their application, start the 40B process tomorrow, if you should decide to turn this down. But if you do decide you want to go forward and support the memorandum of agreement, I just want to call to your attention, I think it's on the top of page three, it's the paragraph C, that we make it clear that our support in no way will interfere with the exercise by each municipal agency or board of any independent jurisdiction or discretion with respect to the project, or any permitting or approval thereof. That's one sentence that says a heck of a lot with respect to the zoning board of appeals. Still has a great deal of discretion here. Just because they're coming in possibly as a friendly 40B does not mean that this project gets rubber-stamped in any way, and it's still, as Mr. Hartman described, it's still going to go through various levels of peer review, and I would expect that there would be appropriate mitigation imposed. of peer review, and I would expect that there would be appropriate mitigation imposed for the project.
Do you have a, just for, part of the calculus of a business, I understand the Pulte folks saying that they want to do the right thing, but I don't know that I'm going to be necessarily, number one, I don't know I'm going to be here if something happens, and then number one, two, I don't know that they're going to be the ones at Pulte making this determination. So I have to consider the possibility that it would go to, it would be contentious, it would be litigated perhaps. So do you have an, any way of gauging if, if, say, there were mitigate, further mitigations they sought to appeal, what would be the anticipated cost of them trying to appeal that, if you could estimate that? Because that could calculate into, if it's, if it's going to cost them $200,000 to appeal something, but we're only asking for $150,000 in additional improvements, then obviously it makes business sense for them to just write us a check, even if the biggest jerk in the universe is the new head of Pulte Homes. Right. So is there any way that you could estimate what the estimated cost of an appeal process would be?
It, it depends on how many levels and it depends on how many days of, of hearing that we have to go through. You know, if we took, say, an average three-day of hearing, three days of hearing, which is, is about average for a project, say, of this scope and size, I could certainly see with the legal fees, well, and, and mind you, I'm basing it on our hourly rates, which are significantly lower than what the developer is going to be paying for their attorney's hourly rates. But I would say something in the range of $100,000 to $150,000 would not be outside of the range of possibilities for our hourly rates. So even that would just be the Housing Appeals Committee exactly. There's still a further level of, do we want to take this to the next level to Superior Court? Do we want to then take it to the appeals court? But of course, at every level along the way, there's always the opportunity to pause and see if there's a possibility to resolve it.
Okay. Thank you, that's very helpful.
Sure.
If I could, too, you know, the other thing, we deal with this all the time with, with special permits in general. Time is money for them.
Right.
And they know what the economy is like now, six months, eight months, 12 months from now, it might be different. So there's also that piece that I think when we try to negotiate improvements, that they have to weigh, too, not simply the cost of the case, but what's the environment going to be like when they get to the other side of the appeal? So that's, that's the other risk that they have to take into account.
Understood. Thank you.
Lee, counsel, where exactly does this project put us on the safe harbor list and all that good stuff?
So to hit a safe harbor itself, and at this point, for the foreseeable future, the best we'll ever get in the next five or years or so is either a one or two-year safe harbor. And a safe harbor says that, it doesn't say that they can't come in with a 40B, but it does say that if we're in safe harbor, the town has the ability to say, no, we want to reject that 40B, whatever it is. So this one will create 38 units?
Yes.
So it's 38 units, so that does not rise to any level that will give us any kind of safe harbor. So as we talk, you know, there's another project out there, the Clermont one, those are, since those are all rental, that will give us a two-year safe harbor, but this one on its own will not. What we could do is look at this, I would have to look to see what else we're doing out there, say, with the building permits issued for Sawmill, that would be about the only other, Sawmill, and actually, we have the, the one, they keep changing, the Bartlett pasture in Manomet, too. So those are two 40Bs that are issuing permits, too. Again, I think cumulative, when you look at all those units, we still don't rise to the level of even a one-year safe harbor. So this on itself probably won't do that.
But Clermont, if it was to come onboard, and this one, that will put us in safe harbor?
For two years.
Two years. Would that, we be in safe harbor with just Clermont?
Yes.
Lawyers. Any other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Canty?
If nobody else has any, I, I'm personally underwhelmed with a million dollars in improvement for a, a perennial increase in traffic to this area, for a development that's going to exist for, I don't know, 25 years or so, over a long enough timeframe, that's very little in the amount of, of improvements. And as you just saw, we're looking to ask town meeting to spend $6.7 million on a highway for fish, so, which we are in support of. So a million dollars for people is, is not, you know, particularly impressive to me. So could you offer us any additional incentive in terms of cash value to the town? For the, we, time is money and we understand that there is a value there, but I am personally not particularly whelmed by that. And we could get into safe harbor with just another development that's concurrently going through this process as well, which I'm certainly well aware of. So I guess I'm asking you, is this worth anything more to you?
At this point, when we, we went, when we met with the town departments and developed that list of mitigation measures and items, we felt for the 150-unit project that it was a, a, a comfortable amount that, that worked for us. And I, at this point, I don't see that there would be additional beyond the items that we've initially offered upfront as something that we would be comfortable with at this point.
Understood.
Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Essex, thank you for being here again. What benefit does Pulte get from us agreeing to this friendly 40B?
It's a, it makes for a more collaborative process for us. It, it just honestly, if there is something to be said about going through a development project in a community where you're, where you're working together as a partnership with the, the officials and the town departments, as opposed to just going through a sea of friction throughout the entire development process. Directly, there's not a monetary value to that, per se. It's more of a, again, a comfort and collaboration value that, that comes with that agreement to, to file for a friendly 40B. There are some other legal stipulations, depending on whether we be filed with Mass Housing or EOHLC, which is determined whether it's a friendly or non-friendly, as far as certain percentages of three bedrooms and, and some other detailed items, but from a monetary value, there isn't any.
Could, could you tell me more about what the, the difference would be for those three-bedroom units?
So for the three-bedroom, the EOHLC requirement is 10% three-bedroom of all of the affordables, and whereas Mass Housing, it's 10% three-bedroom of all units. So for this at 150, it's a, it's a matter of 15 versus four.
Okay. And there's no financial incentive? There's no, there's nothing that you folks benefit from?
Not directly, no.
And indirectly?
Not that I can see, again, no, no direct tangible financial benefit, no.
Okay.
Mr. Mahoney?
David, could you move that flower so I can see the town manager, please? The plant. So this one's for Mr. Hartman or Mr. Brindisi. So we have an offer on the table for roughly a million dollars of multiple improvements. Who's gonna, who's, who's going to oversee that? Who's going to assure that no corners are cut? The execution, if you look at, you know, the water main, you know, it looks like the notation I'm seeing is that the, the numbers were provided by your engineers, but I, you know, I say this all the time, when we're investing in infrastructure, it's over-engineered and we, we don't do things on the cheap. So I just want to make sure that whatever we're getting, who, you know, we had this conversation a week or two ago, I think, with respect to a, a small affordable housing project, where people wanted an audit done, but, so who's going to oversee that? And if that, who, this moves forward, who's going to make sure that we're getting the bang for that dollar with respect to these improvements?
Yeah, I can answer that. So we've had multiple meetings with Pulte, and when I say we, I'm referring to our DPW director, our town engineers, many of them, our fire chief, and certainly our planning director. So for the most part, all these numbers are true and accurate. We've looked those over with our engineers, and those specific departments would be overseeing each one of these components of these proposed improvements. So as you can imagine, the water main and upgrades, both the loop and the replacement of the water main would be overseen by the DPW. Then the rail trail would be overseen by David Gould from the Department of Energy and the Environment. And then the emergency vehicle light improvements would be overseen by traffic engineering and our fire chief.
Just also point out that with the water line, and I'm not sure about the rail trail, but the water line work and the traffic work, that would all be peer-reviewed construction observation. So as they're doing those lines, DPW would have at their expense somebody there inspecting the work, third-party engineers to make sure that work was done properly, as is with the, the emergency lights that they're proposing. So all that work would be reviewed by a third-party engineer hired by the town, paid for by the developer.
Could we just go back to one slide?
Sure.
Your main overview of one, two, and three, the delineation of the 350s? Yeah, right there. So. So if you look at three, you know, it's kind of standalone, it's isolated, it's buffered, it's up there behind Quidditch, it's really not surrounded by, you know, residential. If you look at one and two, you come down Prince Street, are those individuals going to have any sort of, are you going to clear cut up to the property line? If you look at number one, going up to the back yards of the individuals on Prince, if we take a right on Prince, you know, those houses on the left, are you clear cutting up to like a fence? Are you going to leave some sort of buffer or some sort of vegetation?
Yeah, there would be a vegetated buffer and a, a fence as appropriate screening along that property line. There is also a significant slope in that area, too, so it's a big drop down for those. So we would have to carry the slope, you know, we're, we're going down to that driveway there, and so those residences are up. But where, where we would be finishing up with that slope is, would be a vegetated buffer and then a fence along that as well.
And does that philosophy also apply to number two? You know, I don't want to, you know, with the couple of houses on Prince, but if we take, if we're coming down Prince, we take a left on, what's that, Quidditch?
Quidditch, yep.
You know, especially the houses on the right.
Yep, sim, sorry.
Similar, some sort of vegetated buffer, fence?
Yep. So, so the, the houses on Quidditch, again, similarly to the houses on Prince, they're elevated up above from this location. This is, the green area is a stormwater feature, but there would be a vegetated buffer and then additional screening and a fence along that line as well. And those are also, excuse me, I didn't mean to cut, but more site plan details that, as mentioned, you know, if we were to go through the comp plan process with ZBA, we would be going through in heavy detail review of each of these specific site plans where we'd have the opportunity to work with the, the neighbors and homeowners on specifics, better, at a better scale than this, and with more time and more detail on that. You know, a lot of times that process involves numerous meetings that focus on specific items at each meeting. One meeting's focused on traffic, one meeting's focused on site planning, another meeting's focused on architecture. So it would give us that opportunity to really nail down those details for elements such as, as specifics of those.
And the, I think I asked this the last time you heard, the acreage you have under agreement is the footprint of those three numbers that we see up there?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Essex, I just want to be clear on something. So I, I was under the impression that part of the incentive on the part of the developer to engage in a friendly 40B is to obtain more favorable lending rates. Is that not the case with your project?
So Pulte is a fully funded, self-funded, but organization, so that would not be as much of a benefit for us. One other thing that I did want to mention, too, and Board Member Golden, I apologize, there wasn't a financial benefit that was included in the development agreement in the, the waiver of the water fees. So that $150,000 would be a direct benefit of the, to Pulte, of the board signing into that agreement.
Yeah, no, I understand that piece of it. So can, can you just give me a yes or no? If we were to offer you a friendly 40B, would you, would your organization be able to obtain more favorable rates in terms of lending for this project?
I cannot definitively answer that for you. I can, I can definitely look into that and get back to you with that. I'm not sure of the answer on that.
Have you folks done any projections along those lines?
No, not that detailed out.
Okay. Thank you.
So just one point about safe harbor. So if we have, say, for example, the Clermont that comes in, so let's just say there's, they decide, or the board decides that they would support that, either with or without a friendly 40B, Clermont files, typically for us, we talk about easily three, but usually a six-month process to get through the ZBA process. Safe harbor would only happen at the time that the special, that the special permit, the comprehensive permit is issued. So if there is a safe harbor that is going to be claimed for Clermont, it's probably six or eight months down the road from today. Anything that might be filed prior to that would not have that safe harbor. So again, that safe harbor would only start once the special permit is issued, and prior to that, my example would be Oasis and the Walk. So we were just about ready to issue the permit on Oasis, and the week before that permit was issued, the Walk was filed. So normally, we would have had a two-year protection from that other project, but we didn't have that because they came in a week before the permit was issued. And so we had no safe harbor, and we had 640 units coming in at one time.
Mr. Blotter?
Lee, so just to be clear, so if we don't support this, this friendly 40B, they, they could apply and most likely get a 40B?
Yeah, I don't want to speak for it all, but, but, I mean, they know the laws and they know the rules. And so I think it would be very difficult, given the timeline, if we had another project that comes in, that we would be able to have that approved prior to them going through the process and at least filing with the ZBA. And that would apply to other projects that might be out there. I'm not aware of any others, but, you know, that...
But it's more than likely that would happen, that could happen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Board Member Golden, I just wanted to know, I apologize, I don't have that answer, but I will follow up with you and getting that for you.
So is there anybody for, take any motions or any actions or anything? I wanted to see if anybody in the audience wants to speak, has any questions. I see some residents here. Please identify yourself for the record and make sure the light's on. Jade, is there anybody online? No? Okay.
Evan Malaguti, Vice Chair of the North Plymouth Steering Committee. Two of the questions that I asked during the last time they were here, I did not see really anything in the mediation or mitigation on there, and one was the newly created intersection that will be happening by their development that's going to be between Salem Five and the CCD Center, which is going to create a bottleneck right there of traffic going in and out, which already happens right now when you have CCD going in and out of their own building. But with this one being basically 24/7 open access drive for there, that is it going to mediation like was done with CVS, it would be either a left or right turn only for the exiting out of there? And the other one is not the stabilization for Hedge Road, but it's also the bottleneck that happens at Hedge Road, since it literally forms its own literal bottleneck, since the top of the street is narrower than the bottom of the street. Is there talk... Is there talk about mitigating and maybe even sort of widening? And also the cars that park along the side of the building that's already there at the edge of Court and Hedge Road, which creates its own other bottleneck there with especially the turning. If you're going north and turning down Hedge Road, that you have the cars you have to avoid with cars that are coming up the street as well, too, which creates a traffic hazard, not just for the vehicles, but also if there's fire apparatus that's either going down or up the street as well, too. So I think those two need to be addressed further that the consultants might not have looked at, but it's an encumbrance that's going to be happening and has already been hap... may not be on their scope, but we see it at the local level.
Okay. I'm not going to go over the traffic counts, that's for sure. I think I made it quite clear last time. And I do appreciate your effort and respect what you said. But like I said, I've been around long enough to see other projects. And, you know, it's a snapshot in time for today. And you might say be the first project in that area. And then, you know, five years down the road, next month, another one comes in, another one. And then, well, you know what, all the numbers we just looked at don't work anymore. And that's really my precaution there. And to be quite honest, a million dollars for a project, this doesn't do anything for me. Once you back out the 155, it's under a million dollars. And not only that, it's a start, but I think you can do better, but I can't make you do better. And it will be what it will be. But what benefit does the people in that area, like Everett lives there and the people on Court Street and Mr. Canty and myself, I live on Court Street also, what benefit is it to the actual residents in that area? I mean, I know you're doing infrastructure on water and without looking at the whole list here. But that's also to help yourselves. I mean, it's not like you're putting a water line in for us because we got water main breaks. But it also makes the service better for yard development. So I'm not really sold on... I'm just not. And you know what? If you go file tomorrow, the next day, then so be it, that's your choice. But a million dollars is like I'm selling the town out for a million bucks. And as you see what we just put in Jenny Pond, it's a lot more than a million. So, I mean, those are little numbers. I know maybe not on your chart, but I don't know. I just was hoping it was something at least for the residents in that area to benefit. Whether, you know, I don't know. I'm not a planner, maybe it can be mitigated, but just a million dollars back out to 155 is not a lot of money. It's just not.
So just to speak to that, if it's all right. So the water infrastructure is not necessary for our project. What the Weston and Sampson analysis showed is that the existing infrastructure is more than capable of providing the capacity and service that we would need for our project. The North Plymouth rail trail enhancements, I think, would be a great benefit to the neighbors more generally. It's hard for me to speak to Court Street specifically where I don't know which part of Court Street you're referring to. But through coordination and conversations with Deputy Fire Chief Malaguti, the hedge road intersection is a major concern for them. And the ability to have control of that, traffic control at that signal is a significant concern and a significant issue for them getting access to calls in that direct area for residents in that area. And again, the water improvements are a direct improvement to specifically the Prince Street residents, but also the residents in, through the water main loop, through Quordage and Hedge of for water quality improvements via that infrastructure.
Because one of the, Ms. Sheehan, she's a very good advocate for water. I'm surprised she's not here being concerned about it. I mean, because usually she is. And I don't know. Sure, come on up to the mic, please. Just identify yourself for the record.
Yes, I am Damon Scarsi. I'm one of the abutters. As mentioned earlier in this conversation about commercial, isn't that section where number three is in a commercially zoned area?
40B circumvents that, it's a trump card.
I'm sorry?
40Bs, they circum... It's a trump card. It circumvents that.
Okay, no, I was just curious. But, you know, that would be something I would think the town would be interested in trying to maintain. But I understand 40B comes in, it's all off the table then. My other concern, not to reiterate, was the traffic situation. And I know we're not here to talk about traffic, but this goes much deeper than just those two intersections. I mean, you have an old North Plymouth. At any given time, when that light turns green moving southbound, there's going to be a good chance that you're not even going to make it through the intersection because traffic just does not flow through North Plymouth. So that combined with other issues, that has to be re-looked at. Because I don't know where they get their numbers. And to me, living there, I see a lot. So that was my other main concern, which we don't need to, you know, beat a dead horse, but it's definitely a big problem. That's about all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Mr. Golden?
So I would prefer we put off a final vote on this until, I think, our next meeting that doesn't already have a presentation coming in would be the January 7th meeting. I think we're scheduled to hear a more favorable presentation in the near future from a different developer. And I think this developer could do more to get me potentially to a yes vote. But if we were voting on this tonight, I would be voting no. So I would suggest that we postpone this until at least January 7th for a final vote because I am not in a position to be able to even come close to voting for this as currently presented. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would agree with Mr. Canty on those remarks. Isaac, you mentioned that PULTY is fully self-funded, which is why you haven't done the numbers for what kind of rates you might obtain through a friendly 40B. One way that you might be able to convince me and some of my colleagues would be to increase the number of affordable housing units that would be a part of this project. Is that something that you folks could do?
It's something that I can bring back to my office and introduce that idea to. It's not certain, not something I can commit to right here at this, at this meeting. But it's, it's something that I can bring back to my office.
Lee is stalking you, so...
If I could point out, there would be two things. One is the number of affordables, and the other one would be the affordable rate, as we've heard. So there would be two things to look at, increasing the number of affordable or looking at that 80% and dropping that to a lower number. Something we've talked a lot about in the community.
Yep, and we've had that conversation as well. And that's something that I can have that conversation, like a 60% or... We can have the conversation as far as what, what kind of number we're looking at.
It'd be great to see both. Thank you.
I would, unless my, any of my colleagues have other comments, I would make a motion to postpone this agenda item until either January 7th or a later date that is mutually agreeable between the chair and the presenter. Second?
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Golden. Discussion? Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Okay, thank you very much for your time. And I'll reach out and touch base as far as that, that next meeting. Thank you.
Annual Town Meeting Proposed Article Discussion?
So again, just as a reminder to the board, last week, we introduced this as an agenda item. It'll be on next week's agenda as well. We are scheduled to close the warrant on December 18th. Any articles that the board wishes to place on the annual town meeting warrant, we would need a discussion and a vote so that we can close out the warrant on December 18th.
So I talked last week about my proposed articles. I just had a follow-up conversation with Town Council today amidst other things that Town Council was working on that we dealt with earlier. And a definition of facilities is forthcoming. Would remind folks that in terms of the school article, removing it from the charter, putting it in the bylaw, it would not change the status quo, would just put it in a different place and allow us to continue to have the conversations we're having with the school committee about consolidation. School committee is supportive of this effort. Any change that would be made to the current, if in regards to consolidation, that may come about in the future would require subsequent and ongoing negotiations with the unions. So they would certainly be involved in that process. But, you know, that's, those are just things to highlight and keep in mind. But that's something that is continuing to be worked on and hopefully we'll have a final definition for facilities soon. And otherwise, those materials should be ready to go.
Yeah, I'd like to see some input from the unions on that to see, on that sort. And I talked to some of the folks from the school committee, so... But my, the article I talked about last week, raising the height, height restrictions, there's a guy in the room that I have to talk to to help with this. But I talked with, I've talked to Mr. Ballerton from the Planning Board. I had a conversation with Economic Foundation Stephen Cole. Definitely in favor of this. He thinks it would be something, you know, we get some work to do, to get this to work. But I think the increased heights will, it will entice more companies. You know, and I'm not talking retail, I'm talking office, manufacturing, businesses in the industrial areas. I don't want to, this is not going to affect our downtown waterfront at all. It's only be in industrial areas where that's where we want our developments. But with that, we need to, to change, like greater lot coverage so they can, manufacturing, they can have a bigger size on a, on a property, less parking lots. You know, manufacturing places don't necessarily need a lot of parking. And that'd be less asphalt, which would help our aquifer. Parking requirements, that's another thing, too, is, you know, depends on what the building is in there. It doesn't need as much parking as like a retail, like retail does. So there's things that we can do, and I think this is necessary. I, you know, it used to be where you can't have tall buildings because we don't have fire apparatus to fight it. Well, I talked to Chief Bradley, that was four or five years ago. And we have the equipment and we also, what he told me, explained to me that with the, with the new engineering in these buildings and the fire suppressants, that they have the systems, that this is not an issue now. So I think we really need to, to look at this and get this done. I think it will help our economic development, our commercial tax revenue, which we talk about. So that's something I'd like to see. But I obviously need some help to fine-tune this and put this together. Thank you.
Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Derek, did you say that the warrant closes on the 18th?
I believe, I believe so, yes.
So our next meeting, we have to vote on any of these proposals that we've discussed?
That is correct.
Okay. So I would like to have some time on the agenda to discuss the two articles that I expressed last week regarding the local options for veteran exemptions.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone wishing to speak on a public comment? No? Okay. Town managers report, Mr. Brandisi?
Great, thank you. Just a few items I want to bring up this evening. First, I just want to mention to the community that tomorrow from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. at Memorial Hall, we will be having another ribbon-cutting ceremony. This is for the newly renovated Hall of Flags at Memorial Hall. There were substantial improvements made to the Hall of Flag at Memorial Hall. And so we want to give its credit to tomorrow afternoon, again, 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. at Memorial Hall. We talked a lot about the new Department of Health and Human Services and the great work that they're doing. We just identified an organization out of Cambridge called Health Resources in Action. We have executed an agreement with them. They will be the consultant that'll lead us through a community health assessment and a community health improvement plan. That is going to take into consideration the work of the hospitals, a lot of the nonprofit organizations here in town, and the treatment providers. So that's going to be a community-engaged process. It'll probably take about 18 months, and that'll be kicked off in February. And so just as a reminder, we have a lot of assessments and analyses that have taken place. We have the master plan that's being led by the Planning Board. We just kicked off the Hultec master planning process on Monday. And now we'll be moving towards a community health assessment in February. And then hopefully in the next three or four weeks, we'll announce the kickoff to the master planning process for both Folges Field and the Hedges Pond Recreation Area. So a lot of planning is taking place this fiscal year here in town. I want to just bring up a couple other items, so I'll pass these along. So effective last week, the kiosk has been installed at the Public Health Division here on the first floor. That is the shop's disposal kiosk for medical waste. So I know the board, this is something that we had some challenges with about eight or nine months ago. The Fire Department and the Public Health Division got together and they came with a new and innovative model that I just passed out to. So we are now accepting medical waste here in Public Health, and that'll be disposed of. We're also working with Bamsley over on Court Street. They also are accepting used needles and syringes as well. So we have a partnership that was created by Health and Human Services. So whether you're here in Town Hall or up in North Plymouth, you can drop off your used needles and syringes. And then the other piece I just want to end with is the Light the Season event, I think, was extremely successful this past Friday. I just want to note a few things. So just going back on history, back in 2022 was the first time the, the tree was removed from, was relocated from Town Square over to the green here in front of Town Hall. And that really came in large part, there were a number of businesses who were asking and went to the board and, and the board agreed that that was probably a good suggestion and a good move. And so the last two, from '22 to '23, we had, I shouldn't say we, but Nick Fiala primarily would drive around town on weeks, you know, drive around to identify a 30-to-40-foot tree that was worthy enough to be lighted here in town. And so Jackie Gurney, our Human Resources Director last year, had stated how she went around with him to help him identify a tree and how much work it was. And then, as you know, you know, we'd have to get the trucks involved and we'd have to, you know, bring this thing downtown. We'd have to have police details to make this tree happen. So with the support of ESP, Mr. Leiden had talked about this last week, we were able to get some funding to buy what is this artificial tree that we used this, this past week. And we also included this year, we've created a very close alliance with Congregation Beth Jacob. So we wanted to incorporate their menorah and their Hanukkah season into this tree lighting event. And then we also partnered with the Plymouth Public Schools. And as you know, they had their a cappella bands. I know their, their marching band was actually in Hawaii this past week, so they weren't able to participate like they did last year. And then we had a special guest. So collectively, the, the event has changed dramatically over the last three years. And as you know, the... as you know, the 5K didn't take place either. And I have to say, last year, I received about half a dozen complaints from local businesses because of the 5K, because the roads were shut down, that because their patrons couldn't access the businesses, and having talked to Mr. Blitzer and other select one members, it seemed to me that the businesses were very busy this past week even without a 5K. So a lot of time and energy went into the coordination of this effort. Typically, these types of events, the town doesn't get involved in coordinating these efforts, but this effort being led by Jackie Gurney, our HR Director, and Nick Fiala, our parks director, in my mind, pulled together an amazing event, really pulled together an amazing event. David Bedeau was the new Santa this year. He did a great job, had a lot of energy, partnering with the spire who opened their front door so that all the children could visit Santa. This really took on a different shape. So I want to thank everyone who was involved in this, from, you know, obviously, fire police, DPW, Nick Fiala, and, and Jackie Gurney, our HR Director, for coordinating this event, and thank Congregation, Congregation Beth Jacob for, for their willingness to participate in a really true community event with having the menorah. And, you know, Hanukkah will, will take place the first day in a couple of weeks, and so we know they'll be out front, you know, lighting their candles each and every day during Hanukkah. So again, I just wanted to kind of bring, give everybody a three-year history lesson on how we arrived to the place that we are now and the event that's been created from it. So, and then we followed up on Saturday with Light the Night, which is down at Bruce the Gardens, which is being put on, and it's getting bigger every year as well. I mean, if you remember what happened three years ago, they must have had four or five lights out there, now all of Bruce the Gardens is being lit up, and they continue to build on that each and every year. So this, these types of events is really building towards, you know, something special, you know, over the first weekend of December each and every year. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about that and talk about, you know, how we arrived to the place we are today. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
We don't tolerate that. No, this ain't the planning board, I'm only kidding. Thank you, Mr. Leite. Any questions for the, you all set, Derek? Yep? Okay. Any questions for the town manager or comments?
Sure. So just, I attended last Friday night, the incorporation of the spire was excellent. There was, you know, complementing the, the tree lighting with the spire across the street. We went over there for a while, it was very orderly, you know, well-run. The question I have, and where is this tree going to be stored in the off-season, Derek? How's that going to work?
Yeah, that, they have a home for it at the DPW quarters up on Kamala Drive.
In this tree, this new investment, we should be able to get 20 years out of that? Is there some sort of life expectancy station?
Yeah, I'm not sure the true life expectancy, but I would say it's minimum 10 years, yeah.
All right, thanks.
I just want to comment and congratulate you and staff and Jackie and everybody, ESB, for, it was a wonderful night, a lot of us were there. I know David was there, Charlie and myself, and I guess John was across the street, and Kevin, were you across the street with Santa Claus?
I was right in front of the tree.
Oh, okay, all right. So we were all there, so I don't know if we posted that, but that's okay. But it was a great night, and I'm glad to see that you brought that over here, and it's nice to see the citizens enjoying this property the way that they should. And I hope that it grows even larger next year, there's things you can do. I think sooner or later, the community's going to have to look for an event planner, if you will, somebody to take these things to a new level. We miss out, I think we do, on a holiday parade, we used to have a holiday light show on the harbor, first night, I mean, I can go on and on, Winterfest, and some of the other bigger affairs. So it's something to think about, promoting our community to, to the fullest for, you know, the downtown and the waterfront, and for the citizens to enjoy, that's really who we all work for, so. I just want to put that out there, but I was there and it was a little bit cold, but it was very nice. And thank you to Matt Mirituri, he did the emceeing, he did do a good job also, so.
Yeah, Matt Mirituri obviously did a good job emceeing, we thank him for stepping up and doing that for the last three years. And I want to also mention Jody Walsh, she's our Assistant HI Director, her husband, I don't know if you noticed, we had the new switch that Santa had to pull to light the tree, her husband actually built that switch, Kevin Walsh. So again, this was really everyone pitching in, doing whatever they could, you know, using their expertise to, to make this a better event each and every year.
Yeah, and, what was it, you know, we saved a tree this year, there's 351 communities in the Commonwealth, John, and if we all cut down one a year, that's 351 times 10 years, 3,511 without your calculator, right? So let's listen, and I did bring up last week because we got a letter from the Buzzards Bay, I think, Coalition.
That's right.
Right, and it asked you to ask staff to, if they'd be willing to give us a regular tree, so we don't have to cut it, and so they actually have, and he's going to go pick it up and we're going to put it somewhere in town, so that's all worked out good. There's going to be naysayers about, about the cost and this and that, but you know what? We have to move on. We have to do what we think is right, and we have to enjoy the building. And I, I posted a few pitches and I had over 300 lights, so there's definitely a few people that enjoyed the night. And that was the thing, Charlie was there too. I mean, the whole front lawn was full, the side streets, it was, I was amazed, I was really happy to see everybody enjoying it. And the Assistant Town Manager was there, he was, he was head of operations, he was running around, he had his hat on. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, new business? No, I won't. Letters? Old business? Mr. Mahoney?
Derek, that discussion on the 40B reminded me, I, I know in the month, last couple of months, you reached out to staff that reports to the governor about her potentially coming down and sitting down with the board in private for roughly an hour to talk about some of the challenges that we face here in the community. Any update on that?
Other than it took them a month to respond and say they would get back to me, I haven't heard back from them since.
Okay, so.
So I guess I have to prod them a little bit.
We have a new state representative in the first Plymouth District, and we have a new state senator, so we need to get those two individuals on it.
And there, we, we are already organizing a meeting in January with the new state delegation so that we can set up our legislative agenda with, with the three of them. Two of them, I think this will be the first time they'll be hearing from us.
Anything else under old business? Okay, motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Golden, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you for watching, have a good week.